Good morning. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners meeting on March 23. I'll call the meeting to order, and seeing that we have everyone present, I guess we don't need to do a roll call, which is nice. Also, it's really nice to have a full, open boardroom, so this ought to be really interesting. Commissioner White will be joining us shortly. He had to step out for just a second, but we'll begin the meeting with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Myers will offer us the invocation.
Oh gracious heavenly Father, we come before you this morning to give you thanks. We ask that you would bless this board, our citizens, and our community. As we prepare to discuss your business today, I ask that you would be with this board. Thank you for our workers who make sure that service is rendered to all. Thank you to those who serve our country, those who serve the citizens here in Hillsborough County. Lord, I ask that you would just be with us and give us that traveling grace to return back home. And for those who would receive awards this morning, thank you for them being here. These blessings I ask in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. I appreciate that. Our first, we have several wonderful proclamations today, and I am going to offer the first one, is my understanding. So I'm going to go down to the podium, I believe, to offer the first one. Let me grab this and take it with me. There we go. I'll be right back. Okay. Plan B. Unfortunately, our participants haven't arrived yet for the first proclamation, but I will get started with it, and maybe they're able to join us. I'd like to introduce who hopefully will be able to join us very shortly. Carrie West and Mark Bias from Tampa Pride. I'm honored to present this recognition of this great organization that is all about community and inclusion. And this weekend, we'll host two major events on the same day. For the eighth year, Tampa Pride will proudly present the Street Festival and Diversity Parade. I can't wait. It's so much fun. These are true happenings in our community, drawing tens of thousands of attendees from all walks of life every year for great food, entertainment, fellowship, and much more. Ebor City will be the place to be the whole day on Saturday and into the night. Now, want to honor Tampa Pride and these outstanding events, I have a commendation I would like to read. It reads, "The Hillsborough County Commissioners, Board of County Commissioners, is pleased to recognize the 2022 Tampa Pride Street Festival and Diversity Parade. Family-friendly extravaganzas that celebrate Hillsborough County's LGBTQ diversity, inclusiveness, and love for all people. Now in its eighth year, the Tampa Pride Street Festival and Diversity Parade are for the entire Hillsborough County community. Held in historic Ebor City, these vibrant events take place on March 26th. Will double the fun for everyone, and in the morning and through the night. The Diversity Parade, with its numerous colorful and creative decorated floats, walking groups, and vehicles, will wind through Ebor City's major thoroughfares. The Street Festival will feature the Tampa Bay Pride Band, a wide variety of vendors, artisans and craft shows, community health fair, food truck alley, and Tampa Pride Night festivities, including a celebrity concert. In 2021, the Tampa Pride Parade was the first in the United States since the COVID pandemic began, and the only parade in Tampa, and it was nationally televised. Last year's events drew national media for the announcement that a multi-billion dollar corporation, Kroger Foods, was moving to Florida. These prestigious events, which last year attracted 80,000 attendees from around the country for fun in a safe environment, gets bigger every year, bigger and better every year. The Tampa Pride Street Festival and Diversity Parade proudly promotes the county's diversity and our sources of great community pride. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend the 2022 Tampa Pride Street Festival and Diversity Parade for its community spirit and extends its best wishes for another special day in the sun and under the lights, executed this 23rd day of March 2020." I do not see our attendees here to offer some words, but I'm sure we'll be able to enjoy their comments and their commitment to our community on Saturday at the festival. So I'm looking forward to seeing them then. I actually have another proclamation, which is really kind of unusual to have two in a row, but I'm going to move forward with that. And I know we do have some attendees today. Our next presentation for declaring March 2022 as Women's History Month in Hillsborough County. We have our several attendees here. We have Gloria Jean Royster. Gloria? Excellent. And Arthenia Joyner? You're both here? Okay, if you want to join me, I'm coming to the podium so we can offer this one. And I believe we also have Ms. Lee Lowry on the call as well. Is she present? Okay.
I'm here. Good morning.
Excellent. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you and welcome. Over the past weeks, Hillsborough County has been celebrating Women's History Month, a time when women are recognized for their contributions that help the nation, state, and community grow and prosper. Hillsborough County is known for our women trailblazers, and three of them are here today, both in person and virtually. In honor of these amazing individuals, as well as the women in our county, I will read the proclamation declaring March as Women's History Month. It reads, and unfortunately, I don't have it with me. I think it's probably running in the door any moment now. It reads, "Women of every race, class, ethnic background, and spiritual belief have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of the United States in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Whereas the Women's History Month began as a local celebration in Santa Rosa, California in 1978, and spread throughout the nation culminating with Congress passing a law in 1987 designating March as Women's History Month. And whereas United US presidents have issued annual proclamations recognizing March as Women's History Month, honoring the achievement of women that have made over the course of American history. And whereas Hillsborough County celebrates Women's History Month through numerous events, including Hillsborough County Public Library Cooperative Ruskin Women's Program, which explores three generations of Ruskin women who provided leadership in the ever-evolving community. And whereas Hillsborough County continues to recognize local pioneers of women's movements such as Eleanor McWilliams Chamberlain, Sylvia Rodriguez Kimball, Phyllis Puzansky, Fortune Taylor, Cecil Waterman Esridge, Helen Gordon Davis, Betty Castor, Mary Alice Dorsett, and many others, who will continue to inspire women for generations to come. And whereas the county honors former State Senator Arthenia Joyner, thank you so much for joining us today, Commission on the Status of Women Lee Lowry, who is joining us virtually today, and author Gloria Jean Royster, a dear friend in my community who I've watched grow and thrive and celebrate this community for their accomplishments and contributions. And whereas Arthenia Joyner Library, the Hillsborough County Women's Hall of Fame, and the Roysters Children's Books symbolize the significant positive impacts women have made to the county and its residents. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commission of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare March 2022 as Women's History Month in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents to recognize the achievement of women and commend those trailblazers whose dedication to women's rights have strengthened Hillsborough County's thriving communities, executed this 23rd day of March 2020." And I'd like to invite, first Gloria, to join us and to have an opportunity to say a few words.
Good morning. To strong women, may we know them. Thank you, Madam Commissioner Overman, Commissioners Kemp, Commissioners Smith, and Commissioners Meyer. To my friends and supporters here, female, to my friends and supporters on and offline, and the men who love us, the commissioners behind us, my friends in the lobby, and my male friends on and offline. I dedicate this proclamation to my deceased mother Doris, a strong woman, to the women that we raise, my granddaughter Isabella Lorena Murray Cologne. I am a 65-year-old black woman, senior citizen, lifelong pedestrian, who has to wait an hour for the bus. I dedicate this proclamation in honor of Women's History Month, asking all real women of Tampa and Hillsborough County, regardless of your station in life, to help move this county forward in the 21st century, in the city and county of champions. We need transit now. Thank you.
Your courage is amazing. And I actually do have... I'm hiding. I'm just digging them out. And this is your proclamation. There's your copy. Isn't that nice? That's all right. That's exactly right.
Thank you.
And with that, I'd like to invite Senator Arthenia Joyner to join us.
Good morning. I'm truly humbled and honored to be here this morning to receive this proclamation. And I accept it on behalf of the many strong black women and white women who have been instrumental in my life. You named a few. Ms. Dorsett and I were at the same church. Sylvia Rodriguez Kimball, her relatives taught me at Middleton High School. All of these women have been instrumental in my life. But Helen Gordon Davis, the late Helen Gordon Davis, whom I met when I was five years old, when my family first moved here to Tampa. And she was the first white woman that I met that I started a relationship with. And all of these years, she's always been there for me and actually encouraged me to become involved in politics. So I got a... And every year during the legislative session, she would send me a big bouquet of flowers and a beautiful card, and encouraged me and gave me advice to help me navigate the halls of the Florida Capitol. And here in Hillsborough County, two numerous to mention were the black women who taught me in school. Ms. Princeton in first grade, Ms. Clemmie James in second grade, Ms. Shehigh, Ms. Starworth in third grade, Ms. Doris Ross of Reddick, the first black woman on the Hillsborough County School Board, was my fifth-grade teacher, and sixth grade was Ms. Jessie Artest. Those women, along with my mother, Jean Joyner, made it possible for me to be able to stand here today. They instilled a sense of pride in me, pushed me, and said, "You can be anything you want to be, Arthenia. Segregation is not going to diminish your abilities at all. You'll be able to compete." Because I grew up in the segregated era, and notwithstanding all of what we didn't have, we may do with what we did have, and that I attribute to my success. And I want to thank the Board of County Commissioners, and particularly Chairwoman Kim Overman, for this acknowledgement today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I'd like to give an opportunity for Ms. Lowry to speak. Is she available to speak online?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair Overman. I'm honored to be here today with these amazing, outstanding women on behalf of the County's Commission on the Status of Women to celebrate Women's History Month. The COSW is a wonderfully diverse and influential group of women who represent a variety of organizations, viewpoints, and experiences. They are either appointed by our county commissioners or a representative of an organization that is working to support women, from the Helen Gordon Davis Center for Women, to the Girl Scouts of West Central Florida, to the Tampa Bay Chamber, to my own organization, Hillsborough Community College. I know some of my fellow commissioners are watching with me this morning, and I appreciate them and their support of the women in our community. The COSW was created to study and make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners on issues pertaining to the status of women, in particular, those that affect women's wellness. Issues we have identified include attainable housing, human trafficking, reliable transportation, and economic opportunity. We are proud to play a small part in finding solutions to these crucial challenges. And a few weeks ago, we ladies of the COSW had the particular pleasure of celebrating Women's History Month in a special way by inducting a new class of incredible women to the Hillsborough County Women's Hall of Fame. Some of them have already been mentioned. We also had the honor of doing an official unveiling of the Hall of Fame installation located at the Arthenia Joyner Library. Thanks to several of you commissioners for joining us for that wonderful event. Our three honorees for 2020 were spirited civil rights activist, Mary Alice Dorsett, empowering lifelong educator and inspiring friend to our community, Doritah Nguyen Edgum, and trailblazing public servant Janet Sprigens Martin. And just some of the words used about these three women that night were "purpose and passion," "intentional impact," "driven and unafraid," and "eloquent and poised." And as I mentioned that night, I believe we women in particular need to bring all those skills and traits to bear to make the change we need to see in our community. So thank you again for the honor of having me today to represent our COSW women. Happy Women's History Month.
Thank you. Thank you very much for offering just the work that you do and for celebrating women in our community. I'm taking this a little off-script because I mentioned earlier that we offer the proclamation for Tampa Pride street festivities, and we do now have Carrie West to join us. I am able to see you, and it's great to see you. And what I'd like to do is, I've already offered the proclamation, but I would like to do is give you an opportunity to say a few words.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you, Hillsborough County. Thank you, State of Florida. Thank you, all the neighbors and friends here in Hillsborough County. First of all, on behalf of Tampa Pride, also of the residents and all the friends here in Hillsborough County, and also the State of Florida, I present to you the flag, the new flag here.
Oh, wonderful.
For this year's 2022 Tampa Pride, which is going to be here coming up this weekend. And we have a great event coming on forward and bringing in especially the USS Constitution's Color Guard, going to be leading off the flag presentation and parade this year. The United States Navy Band, marching band, will be here following the USS Constitution Color Guard. Also, in a tradition, the 125-foot eight-color rainbow flag coming in from Key West, and that will be presented this year. And that'll be coming on, following the Color Guard and the bands. We have 170 units that will be in the parade this year. Unbelievable. And we had to cut the units down this year because we sold out and were filled up a month ago. So that's because of all the presentations and all the people lovingly wanting to be in part of the parade and be part of this great county and efforts. So we really applaud that. One of the nice things I have to say about our community is that, yes, it is. We do have our champions. We have our champions in medical. We have our champions in education. I have our champions in sports. And we also have our champions here and also in our cultural efforts, as in Tampa Pride. We're very proud to know that. We're the only parade last year in Tampa. We're also the first parade since COVID in all of the United States for being the first Pride Parade for over a year and a half in all of the United States. We were presenting and brought in one of the first companies in Florida, a multi-billion dollar corporation, that asked us to be a part and introduce themselves. And that little, small company happened to be Kroger Delivery. And they wanted to become, and I said, "Why don't you go down to Tallahassee? Why don't you go to Disney? Why don't you go down to Fort Lauderdale?" They said, "Because Tampa Pride represents their qualities, and Tampa represents their destination of what they want to do and be a part of." But they had all the press. They brought 23 Kroger trucks in, so I think everybody recognized that Kroger was now going to be a part of Florida. And they brought in their press corps. They brought in everybody. And yes, we had a lot of the county commissioners there. We had a lot of the state officials there. They stood on Tampa Pride stage to announce that they were moving into Florida. I think that was a big honor. Also, we want to make sure that everybody's going to be there to enjoy this event. It's a full event. It's community-oriented, a day-long event, and it's going to be filled with a lot of activities. And also, we want to thank the county commissioners because we have a lot of events. And one of the great events out there is in helping this, in helping present this. And I want to say thank you all commissioners because with this event, we do have also what's called the Scholarship Fund for corporations to get involved with. We're out presenting. We had a homeless person. This homeless person went on to become an RN, is now working over in Lakeland Regional Hospital. This person then, now, who happens to be a trans person, was a valedictorian of the class coming out of college. She is now going from being an RN and is becoming a doctor, is going to med school, and right now, straight A student. And she'll be a doctor here in the state of Florida. I think that commends and just says, this is part of what, right here, the commissioners here have helped with helping Tampa Pride and, you know, the arts and all the other different nonprofits in this state. But this is one of the things we start with, the Tampa Pride Foundation Scholarship Fund. Little things like that have helped this one person, and that person's going to be a major effort in the USF and also in here in the area and also state of Florida. I think, thank you. I just have to applaud that.
It's awesome. Thank you.
So thank you very much. Very much.
Thank you so much for being here today. And I'm going to ask you to give to Mark.
Oh, sure.
There's his.
Oh, very good. Thank you. Thank you.
And thank you very much for the flag.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the flag.
Madam Chair.
And with that, I'll turn it over. Oh, that's right. Do you want to do photos?
Well, we have a speaker in the queue.
Okay. Commissioner Kemp. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'll start out by, with, we're just very pleased. We're all, I think most of us are going to be at the Gay Pride Parade on Saturday, and that's exciting and wonderful, and I'm glad to have it back. And thank you for the proclamation this morning. We're very pleased, all of us, and supportive to see you here. So thank you so much. I also, because we had a kind of combined proclamations here, if I, go ahead. I think you were, I don't know if others wanted to speak to this, but I also wanted to speak to the second proclamation, too.
Okay. All right. Great. So I know this is a little disjointed, but can we do a photo for the Pride proclamation first? If you guys want to be on the photo? Thank you. And Arthenia? Gloria? Come. Don't be shy. Thank you very much for being here. And before everybody gathers up their things, Commissioner Kemp wants to make some remarks.
I just, we've kind of gotten out of order here, but I really wanted to make sure. One, Senator Joyner, we stand on your shoulders and thank you so much for all the leadership you've shown for decades, both before your political service and after. And I also want to thank you for recognizing the other women that you recognized. I still think about and look to Sylvia Kimball Rodriguez as a Sylvia Rodriguez Kimball, as a symbol and as one of the leaders on the county commission, that I look to her legacy, as well as Helen Gordon Davis and the work that she did in the Florida Legislature. So thank you for that. Well, I'd like to recognize Gloria Royster. I was, first of all, moved by your remarks very much. Thank you for using your opportunity to continue activism. That's just like what I would be doing. And to recognize that you're a pedestrian all your life with hourly bus service. 19 of our routes are hourly routes out of 30, and we have got to change that. So thank you for saying that, but also for resurrecting truly the memory of Fortune Taylor, for bringing that history is a profound move, and especially at a time now when we are, when we have not had our full history, a full picture of who we are, and to be filling in that history and making it available. And then now, when I hear something like that under attack, it's really disturbing. But I want to thank you for working so hard to bring that history of this area and this region to us and really changing and letting us know about who we are. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here, too. It's been such a pleasure to see you again. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Kemp, for those comments. I, too, relished the relationship I had with Sylvia Rodriguez Kimball and actually worked on her campaign when she ran. And so there have been some wonderful women in our community that have made a huge difference, including those that are sitting here at the dais, okay? All the way around the way. You know, typically, we present county departments on a quarterly basis during our quarterly awards ceremony. However, a recent ceremony was canceled due to COVID, and this is an important and timely issue given in the midst of our dry season. So I'd like to waive the rule in this case and ask Commissioner Smith to present this last recognition. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And is our...
And is our utility director, George Cassidy, on the call today?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Good. Welcome. Hillsborough County has countless natural resources, our parks, wildlife, and beautiful scenery, but the most treasured resource we have is water. We need it to sustain life, and we must do everything we can to conserve it, especially since we live in a very drought-prone state. Mr. Cassidy and his dedicated staff have done an incredible job providing clean drinking water and wastewater treatment services to unincorporated Hillsborough County, even as we grow at a rapid pace. Throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, they have been instrumental in public outreach on the importance of water conservation and how important it is to our community's growth and economic prosperity. Before I read the proclamation today, I just want to take a brief moment to tell people about some ways to save water and save money. Tampa Bay Water has a Water Wise program encouraging water conservation by giving rebates to people and businesses when they upgrade their appliances to new Water Wise appliances. For example, they give rebates of $100 for up to $100 for an efficient toilet and up to $400 for commercial dishwasher. And they have other rebates available for other water conserving appliances and devices like controllers for yard sprinklers. And so I encourage everybody to find out more about this rebate program at tampaaywaterwise.org. That's tampaaywaterwise.org. And you can find also information at the retail stores where you buy appliances. Also, Hillsborough County's Extension Service has a lot of information and programs that can help people conserve water by planting Florida-friendly landscaping that doesn't need much water and includes drought-tolerant plants. Our county's Extension Service has programs teaching people how to make their own rain barrels to store water and use it to water their garden plants. And they also teach people how to install water-saving micro-irrigation systems. You know, in fact, I went to one of those programs at my local library in Ruskin one time, and I learned from our county Extension Service in one short presentation how to install my own micro-irrigation system, which I did install all by myself to water my garden plants in a water-conserving way. So if I can do it, anybody can do it. And I encourage everyone to check out these resources at tampaaywaterwise.org and our county's Extension Service. And now I'm pleased to read this proclamation declaring April as Water Conservation Month and May 15 through May 21, 2022, as Florida Water Reuse Week in Hillsborough County. It reads, whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature and fresh water is the most precious natural resource, and whereas Hillsborough County recognizes the inherent value in conserving and reusing all types of water, which includes drinking water, storm water, and reclaimed water, and has embraced and implemented a one-water framework to guide and promote the sustainable use, reuse, and conservation of water. And whereas since 1999, Hillsborough County has joined the state of Florida in designating April as Water Conservation Month to teach residents ways they can help save Florida's water resources, and whereas water reuse provides a means for conserving Florida's limited water resources, and Water Reuse Florida has designated May 15 through May 21 as Florida Water Reuse Week. And whereas Hillsborough County Public Utilities promotes water conservation through a wide variety of educational efforts, community outreach, water use restrictions, agency partnerships, and construction of reclaimed water systems. And whereas Public Utilities partners with Hillsborough County Extension Service to promote the use of Florida-friendly landscaping. And whereas small steps can make a big difference, and water conservation is as easy as installing simple water-saving devices in the home and using Florida-friendly landscaping techniques. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare April 2022 as Water Conservation Month and May 15 through May 21, 2022, as Florida Water Reuse Week in Hillsborough County, and calls upon all residents to promote water-saving measures and take appropriate steps to conserve and protect this vital resource, executed this 23rd day of March, 2022, and signed by all seven commissioners. So at this point, Mr. Cassidy, our deepest thanks to you and your team. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Smith. And to echo some of your comments, water is our most precious resource. And certainly, as we enter into the dry season, which is right here, right now, it's especially important that we remind everybody that drinking water is a finite supply, even though we're surrounded in the Bay Area by water, not all of it you can drink. So our drinking supply is finite. And for water conservation reminders, we want everybody to be mindful of their water use inside the house and outside the house to make sure that we minimize waste and unnecessary use. Again, thank you to the Board of County Commissioners for this recognition and your continued support for what Water Resources does and all things water. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for highlighting that. It's critically important during this time period that we celebrate those that are committed to preserving our resources. And thank you, Mr. Cassidy, for all the hard work you do for Hillsborough County residents. With that, I'd like to move to the changes and to address the changes. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. We have one revision or correction to the agenda. An item that was previously A63D is now F1D. This is the board's appointment to the Code Enforcement Board. There are items for time certain. At 10:00 AM is item G1. This is to receive a report regarding the transportation open houses, which were held in February and March of 2022. Item F4 at 10:00 AM, which is Commissioner Myers' item. This is to direct the county attorney's office to draft an ordinance providing for a 30-year 1% transportation sales surtax with 54% to 59% of the funds distributed to the county and cities, 40% to 45% of the funds distributed to HART, and less than 1% of the funds distributed to the MPO doing businesses, the TPO, the reasonable restrictions on the use of the funds received by the county and the city of Tampa, and the ability of the board to modify the distribution of funds in the future, a citizens oversight committee, and providing for a referendum for the tax to be presented to the Hillsborough County voters on November 8, 2022. The next item is Commissioner Hagan's item, item F2 at 10:30. This is to direct county staff to bring to the BACC as soon as possible, but no later than the April 20 meeting, a comprehensive matrix of county-imposed taxes and fees that this commission may reasonably suspend to provide Hillsborough County residents, families, businesses meaningful financial relief as we face this fast-growing economic crisis, which has resulted in spiraling inflation, out-of-control gas prices, cost of living pressures, including such basic needs as housing and food, mounting an unpredictable geospatial instability. Additionally, the BACC contact the Florida Senate President, the Florida Speaker of the House, and our local delegation directly and in writing, and request that representative bodies of their legislative convene a special session to allow for the suspension of the local option fuel taxes in coordination with the state's proposed gas tax relief during the month of October 2022. The next item is Commissioner White's item, item F5 at 10:45 AM. This is to direct Code Enforcement Consumer Protection Staff to work with the county attorney's office and one to investigate the constituents complaint regarding the labeling, marketing sale of the subject Delta 8 hemp products in retail stores of Hillsborough County to refer any determination of illegal and/or deceptive labeling, marketing sales of this product to the appropriate local, state agencies and/or take enforcement action under Hillsborough County's Consumer Protection Ordinance as appropriate, and three determinative similar issues exist in other retail stores in the county, and if so, implement an educational campaign to make the general public, including store owners, more aware of these products and their potential harmful impacts. At 11:00 AM is item B2. This is to approve a resolution of not to exceed $37.5 million of utility system revenue notes to construct acquisition, reconstruction, expansion of various capital improvement projects for the utility system. And then at 11:45 is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Thank you very much.
Move approval?
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, a second by Commissioner Myers. Any discussion? Please indicate your vote. We've got buttons to push again. Wow.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We're not going to address the changes in terms of the board appointments until we get to that agenda item. So that's not a problem. And so I'll entertain a moment, a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We do public comment first. Okay, never mind. Sorry. Okay, so we'll address public comment at this point. I will offer a statement prior to getting started so that we make sure that we're covering our bases here. The board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the board members. However, it is requested that at the same time when you address the board, the comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or a staff member, but rather directed at the issues that are being brought forward. This provides a mutual respect between the board members and the public. The board has set aside 45 minutes in the morning immediately following the changes of the agenda to for public comment. At the discretion of the chair, the board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting in the event that we exceed that 45-minute period. If anyone who wishes to speak virtually or in person during the meeting may do so by completing the online public comment form found out hcflgov.net/speakup. The forum is open to the public. Sign up 48 hours prior to the start of the meeting, and an option is available to notify whether comments will be provided virtually or in person at the meeting. In addition, the person, in-person speakers will be able to sign up onsite via kiosk or smartphone the day of the meeting. For participants who wish to speak virtually, who have completed the online forum, an audio call-in number will be provided to you after the forum is received by the county. All speakers will be required to provide their name, email address, and telephone number online. This information is being requested to facilitate the public comment process. Signups for both virtual and in-person public speaking opportunities for public hearing and public comments close at 9:00 AM on the day of the meeting. The chair will call on the speakers in the name of the order received in which their request to speak has been received, and prioritization will come on a first-come, first-served basis. How are we glad when this gets shorter? The boardroom and the multipurpose room are designated for speakers only, and those who come to the county center to watch the meeting and not speak will be accommodated in the lobby area. For the first 35 in-person signups will be allowed in the boardroom for public comment. And that's a change to update our current policies to address the fact that we've had such success in addressing COVID in our community. Face coverings are strongly encouraged in the boardroom, but not required, and CDC guidance strongly recommends that unvaccinated people and those with weakened immune system continue to wear masks. The multipurpose room will be available to those residents who signed up to speak after the first 35 persons have registered, and the speakers will be asked to please exit the boardroom at the conclusion of public comment. All virtual speakers will be muted upon joining the meeting and will be unmuted as they're recognized by the chair by name. You have three minutes to speak for each speaker. And with that, the, I'd like to invite those that have signed up. The first speaker that I have on a list, and I'm not sure it's the last one, but I'll make sure I add any one that's been added since this was printed, is Vic Bide. He's signed up to speak on F4. Mr. Bide, you're recognized.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Mr. Bide did not call in.
He did not call in. Okay. All right. The next speaker I have on the list is Santiago Carrata, who's joining us virtually, I believe.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Honorable Commissioners, esteemed county administrator, county staff, and those tuning into this morning's meeting. It's always a pleasure and honor to speak before you. I am Santiago Carrata, Presidency of Tampa Bay Hillsborough County's Destination Management Marketing Organization. And this morning, I'd like to comment on item F4 related to the 1% transportation sales tax and surtax, and maybe offer, you know, a slightly different perspective, you know, the tourism perspective. Roughly a quarter of Florida's sales tax is paid by visitors to our state. So if that logic applies, we can estimate that a quarter of Hillsborough County's sales tax is paid by visitors. And we know that visitors spend far more at a destination than just on lodging, more spent on food and beverage, recreation, retail, and of course, transportation. In fact, we're seeing the great benefits of a thriving visitor economy and its impact on the hotel occupancy fee collected in our hotels that's used to support amenities that our locals as well as our visitors enjoy. And we know that currently tourism saves each household in our community over $800 in state and local taxes. In Hillsborough County, what that means is that annually over 24 million visitors contribute to our sales tax, our education tax, and of course, have reinstated this transportation sales surtax. That translates to visitors contributing to improving our transportation network that creates a better quality of life for us who live here. Additionally, improved transportation options means that we can continue to accommodate visitors as well as locals and grow our local economy. Thank you always so very much for allowing me to share this point of view, to think and to thank you, obviously, for your incredible and continued support to our industry. I hope you have a fantastic meeting. Thank you so, so very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carrata. You've been instrumental in helping us be successful in so many ways. The next speaker to, who is actually in person, to recognize is Ronald Weaver. Please join us at the podium.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ron Weaver for One East Jackson Street. I also would like to speak for F4, the item coming before you in just a few minutes. We need this 30-year 1-cent sales tax, and we need it to be bondable, therefore 30 years, not a lesser term. We need to match with the state with 25% state matching by bravely going forward with this penny again. And we need, secondly, to honor the 115,000 blind and disabled and as many elderly for whom transit is their only lifeline. Thirdly, we need for safety to quit being the worst or the second worst in the entire country. There are 1.4 million deaths on highways worldwide every year and 9 million seriously injured on worldwide highways. Many of the hundreds of those are seriously injured in Hillsborough County and many dozens of deaths that need to be prevented. Your own staff has studied a 40% decrease in crashes by passing this penny. We must be safer in Hillsborough County. Number five, we are 20th of 20 major markets in mobility option, which means lower wages and greater levels of poverty. Six, COVID was a short-lived decrease, but now congestion has caught up, as will congestion after this gas tax blip passes. Let's not let little things that happened in the last three weeks determine our fate. Even the state legislature said you can only vote on this once every two years. Let's not miss this window. Shakespeare said, "There comes a tide," and I think maybe Gwen Meyer said, "There comes a tide in the affairs of men, which taken at the flood, it's on the fortune, and if missed, only to misery and despair." The misery and despair of snarled traffic means that we have more pollution. We can reduce that pollution by transit. Transit is 95% safer. Transit is five to eight times less polluting. Transit is our only lifeline for 115,000 blind and disabled and as many elderly. Number seven, we will be 2 million people in this county and 4.5 million in this region by just 2045. Housing went up about 10% to 20%. We need affordable transit to reduce that percentage that is now spent on housing. We need to take this counting forward. Urgently, we need transit for affordable housing and near every housing to be affordable, and we only do that with transit. We need to kill those parking lots. There's four spaces for every one of us. We need to turn those excess parking lots by transit means into parks and turn them into affordable housing, desperately needed. The Supreme Court threw out the first penny, so be it. It wasn't the fault of anyone here. It was the fault of the fact that the Supreme Court happened to believe that the matter should be statutorily determined by you, your decision, your courage. And I therefore encourage you to pick today the opportunity to take this tide with respect to our transportation future, with respect to our children, with respect to their education, and finally, to offer jobs to folks building those highways and building that transit for those desperately needed jobs for our people. Your opportunity has come. I encourage you on item F4 this morning to take this opportunity. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. I appreciate that. Our next speaker who signed up virtually is Bruce Shepherd. Mr. Shepherd, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
I'm a retired physician, a 40-year resident of Hillsborough County, and not representing an organization. Although I am past president of the Hillsborough County Medical Association, I'm speaking for myself, and I'm speaking in regard to item F4 in support of the measure. As you know, 57% of Hillsborough residents supported this in 2018. So hopefully, this measure will be passed with language that will be acceptable in terms of legalese in the state of Florida. I believe the language should mirror as closely as possible what was originally written in the original resolution. F4 will address a major gap in our society in Hillsborough County. We have great business climate, great educational institutions, growing technology sector. The elephant in the room, the missing piece, is transportation, as has been eloquently spoken about in the previous speakers. "Oh, no," you say, "inflation, pocketbook issues." This is not the time, to which I say the time to invest in Tampa's future, in Hillsborough County's future, is now, and will only become harder to correct if we don't address it at this time. I urge the Commission respectfully to consider this referendum using language as close as possible to the original and to think big, to think bold and long-term for the benefits of our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Our next speaker is speaking on G1, I believe, and that is Stanley Gray. Mr. Gray, you're recognized, who's attending virtually.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Your fellow county commissioners as well as the staff-
Mr. Gray, could you get a little closer to your microphone so we can hear you?
Good morning, Madam Chair, County Commissioners, as well as the staff of the county's employees. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Urban League of Hillsborough County. I'm going to state the obvious, and I'm sure that everyone will agree with me. There's not one thing that we can do or buy or purchase that can turn people to economic equity. But there is one thing that is an impediment, and that is transportation. To give you an example, we run a program called the Phoenix Program, and one of the things that we try to do is get people into pre-apprentice programs that will lead to living wage jobs. And to do this, we have to ask a series of questions. And almost to the person, one of the biggest issues that comes up is transportation. So we have to find out ways or figure out ways to get over this. But I'm appealing to every member who has a vote on this issue to really go forward with this, because transit is the key to not only employment, but the key to housing and the betterment of our collective or aggregate lives of our county. I thank you for your time, and I urge you seriously to consider this request from the Urban League of Hillsborough County as well as the citizens to enact this tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Our next speaker is Andy Mates, who's here in person. You may approach the podium, sir.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. It's good to be with you here this morning. Andy Mates, I have the pleasure of serving as the Chair of the Tampa Bay Chambers Board of Directors. Feel like it's a little bit like Groundhog Day, sands, the mirrors, and the plastic. I don't think we need to go into the whys. You all know the whys. We've been here multiple times with banners and buttons and placards indicating that we need to move this issue forward. We've called it all kinds of things in the past. I think you all just know now that we need to fix what all of my fellow citizens have previously said needs to be done, right? We have an issue. We need to fix it. And it's not just roads and infrastructure and potholes. This issue is one variable in a bunch of variables that are interdependent, and without effective, affordable, well-thought-out transit and transportation, many of the other issues like workforce housing, workforce development, childhood poverty, all the things that we all want to see progress in our community cannot go forward. And so this is one portion of a significant move to take us to be the city that we have all worked so hard to become and from what we see is growing around us. So I want you all to know that as you consider F4, the Tampa Bay Chamber and the business community stand ready, willing, and able to support your efforts to move Hillsborough forward. The Chambers long believed that a safe, affordable, and connected transit system is what will ultimately propel our city, our county, and our region forward. We all see that there's unprecedented growth in Hillsborough County, far outpacing the growth in the state and in other cities in the nation. And as we all learned during the partner presentations at the recent workshop earlier this month, the current funding model is not tenable to keep pace with our accelerated growth. So Madam Chair, the Chamber looks forward to working with you and with all of our commissioners and our community partners to ensure that funding is invested in a fiscally responsible manner and in accordance with a plan that ultimately implements an improved expansive transportation network encompassing Plant City, Tampa, Temple Terrace, and all of Hillsborough County. Thank you for your leadership. Let's go get it done one more time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time, and thank you for being here today. The next speaker, also in person, is Linda Raymond. Ms. Raymond, please come to the podium. Thank you very much.
Morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I am here also speaking on item F4, and I am Linda Raymond, President and CEO of the Tampa Downtown Partnership. And the Tampa Downtown Partnership is a private, not-for-profit, 501(c)(6) membership organization comprised of 240 companies, organizations, and individuals with the common goal of advancing downtown Tampa. Through an annual contract with the City of Tampa, the partnership manages the downtown special services district and cultivates public and private collaborations and encourages downtown Tampa's physical and economic development. The partnership's Board of Directors represents the business leaders and stakeholders of Tampa's downtown, and advocating for transportation solutions is one of our core strategic initiatives. Ensuring we have funding and community support for 21st century mobility options is critical for Tampa's downtown as a hub for the region. In August of 2018, the partnership's Board of Directors voted unanimously to support the citizen-led, all-for-transportation referendum, the same referendum that 57% of Hillsborough County residents voted for four years ago. The partnership still believes it is time for Hillsborough County to invest in funding measures that will offer a variety of transportation and transit options to be made available for our citizens, including improved and safer roads, and hopefully, no one will have to wait for a bus for an hour. We must continue to address the transportation challenges facing residents, workers, and visitors trying to move throughout Hillsborough County and the Tampa Bay region. With that said, I am asking you today to take action and vote to approve putting the 30-year mobility 1-cent sales tax referendum on the ballot in November to fund transportation projects throughout Hillsborough County. This is a long-term investment that provides the funding, planning, and implementation strategy to take aggressive and responsible action on transportation issues that will improve the quality of life in our community. So on behalf of the Tampa Downtown Partnership, I thank you for your leadership and your service for Hillsborough County and encourage you to approve this 1-cent sales tax referendum. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for attending. The next speaker is Sharon Calvert, who's joining us virtually. Ms. Calvert, you're recognized.
Hello. Do you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I'm Sharon Calvert, and President of Fix Our Roads First, speaking also on F4 regarding the proposal for a 30-year, 1%, it's not 1 cent, $18 billion sales tax. The county and the TPO claim to do lots of outreach on transportation issues in our post policies, and that's included outreach and appointing to transportation citizen committees those who actually want to tear down our interstate and push the street-level congestion creating rail projects in Hillsborough County. It's disappointing, though, that outreach to a variety of diverse opinions and with those that perhaps the county or the TPO may disagree is sorely lacking. From the transportation workshop you held a couple weeks ago, HART presented their 2021 ridership with back to 2019 pre-COVID levels, which is a super, super minority of about 1.78% of Hillsborough's current population. We know this commission will put the 1% $18 billion, 1% tax on the November ballot that will hand HART $7 to $8 billion to fund the Tampa rail projects and HART's transportation development plan for a ridership of less than 2% and will be paid for by taxpayers in unincorporated Hillsborough. No wonder HART's Moving Hillsborough Together logo reflects the skyline of downtown Tampa. The 30-year tax bonded out will tie the hands of future boards and will eliminate any possibility of ever repealing the tax in the future. It is unfortunate that the county won't acknowledge that the tax hike playbook has become quite old and stale, and the cards the county has laid down to the public, which now you cannot back away from, are very flawed. We know, and anyone who has scrutinized the county budget knows Hillsborough County can fund its transportation needs, including transit, without any new tax. The TPO's 20-year transportation plan even includes using every cent of a reauthorized infrastructure, often under the savings tax, for transportation, and the commissioners who sit on the TPO approved it. We will be glad to speak with you if you're truly interested in diversity of opinions and transportation funding solutions other than a massive 1% $18 billion tax hike, as your constituents are burdened with the misery and despair of raging inflation. Thank you again for displaying the county's tax hike cards, flawed as they are, to the public.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker is Gerald White, who's joining us virtually.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair. Gerald White, Hillsborough County, community activist. First, I want to make sure your G1 report, your infrastructure planning workshop that was conducted throughout the community include 30th Street between Bush Boulevard and Fowler Avenue. I mean, it's on the west side of Bush Gardens. I think it's critical that that road be redone. It's horrible. It really is an embarrassment for all of Hillsborough County, seeing as though it's on the side of our number-one attraction, which is Bush Gardens. So that report definitely need to include 30th Street and funding need to be allocated in any tax that comes forward. My concern about the referendum that's proposed, Commissioner Myers, is is this a clean proposal? And I say that with respect to the settlement of the previous tax that I voted for that the citizens put in place. We need a complete and total resolution of that issue. I think it'd be hard pressed for citizens to vote for something new without a conclusion of something that we voted for in the past. And so that's what I'm asking for. I support this F4 agenda item, but it'd be difficult for me to vote for it without a complete and total resolution of the past referendum. Also, within this proposal, the Citizens Oversight Committee, I would like to have that struck from the proposal. I think the oversight should be conducted, primary oversight should be done by elected officials, and if the Board of Commissioners deem fit, let the Hillsborough County Commission Citizen Advisory Committee conduct some oversight. I don't want any language that's similar to the previous language that would confuse folks and create a campaign that will cause the proposal to fail in the future. So I'll just leave it at that for now. Commissioner Hagan's item, F2, I support that. It'd be great to get some relief on gas tax. I spent, I mean, just a half a tank in my truck costs about 45 bucks, and to get back and forth to work, it's really killing everybody in Hillsborough County and the nation. So any relief in that respect would be much appreciated. The issue is, will we truly see it if the government bodies take away the tax? There's been talk that the government can put up in place, but the local businesses wouldn't recognize it and push the savings down to the customer. So if that could be done and ensured, I'm all for a lower cost of gasoline. Thank you so much for hearing my concerns and continuing your great work. I know you have a deadline with this F4, but it's got to be clean, and it's got to be pure-
Mr. White, thank you very much for your comments.
And it's got to be sure for people that voted for it.
Mr. White, your time is up, but thank you very much for joining us today and for your comments. We appreciate it. I have one more speaker that's listed as an off-the-agenda item, and I'm not sure if they're speaking to a particular issue. So in the event that was missed, please, I would like to recognize Anthony Huffman, who is here in person. Please join us at the podium, sir.
My name's Anthony Huffman. I'm Vice President of the Hillsborough County Towing Association. I've come before you this morning to let you know that we are conducting a workshop with local law enforcement to raise what we call our rotation rates, our law enforcement toes. This matter has came up in the past, and we've been kind of slow to move on it. The current conditions, I'm sure any of you who drove to work this morning know what they are. Fuel prices are just outrageous, and as to our equipment costs, insurance costs, everything has gone up. It's important to note that our last raise was six years ago. In that time, we've seen just massive, massive changes in the industry, more financial obligations. So to that end, I would like to invite you or any member of your staff who want to participate in the workshop to join us. Also, kind of off-guard, F4, as somebody in the towing business, I totally support that. I mean, I'm on the roads every day. People, it's time. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir. I'd like to learn more about the item that you brought forward. So we look forward to doing a little research on the issue that you brought forward. Thank you. Okay. With that, it's the last speaker I have signed up for public comment at the moment. So with that, we can move on to address the consent agenda. Thank you.
So moved.
Do I have a move to approval for Commissioner Kemp and a second by Commissioner Cohen? Please indicate your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. It's after 10, so we can move on to our first-time certain item. This is item G1 to receive a report regarding the transportation open houses that were held in February and March, and John Lyons is here to present that item.
Good morning, Commissioner. John Lyons, Assistant County Administrator, Public Works. Commissioners, I just wanted to follow up on a report back to the Board on the five open houses. We briefly covered that at the workshop back on March 10, and I just wanted to briefly, very briefly, kind of hit the highlights of this. We did conduct five transportation workshops in various locations around the county. Over 250 citizens attended those workshops in total. The cities at heart were invited to also participate along with TPO. The citizens that were there were very engaged in conversation with our staff in asking a lot of questions and focusing on what their opinion was of some of the needs. I think the key thing that we took away from that is that, you know, they want our infrastructure maintained, sidewalk improvements, resurfacing roads, fixing potholes. Safety was mentioned numerous times, and it's a primary focus across all modes of transportation. They wanted a high-quality transit system and also a lot of relief from traffic and congestion. The information's within the report, and I would be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. I appreciate the report. With that, I'll recognize Commissioner White.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. What percentage, then, of Hillsborough County's population attended these workshops?
Well, that would be 250 out of about 1.4 million, Commissioner. I don't, haven't done the math, but it's way less than decimal points of 1%.
Right. So it's, let's see here. It's about 0.01%, so about 1/100 of a percent, right?
Was that a question to Mr. Lyons?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that my quick math was adding up, so, but I just, I wanted to get that on the record. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the commissioners? And to your point, Commissioner White, I would say that, you know, we did hear, according to the report, 268 persons attended our town halls, but over the years, we've actually, especially in the last couple of years, we've heard from over 5,200 participants in various different surveys that have gone out, as well as what we've heard over the years here in this, you know, in this boardroom, on what our citizens would like to see in the way of a transportation plan. So I think that percentage is a little higher than the 268, but I do appreciate that we have made an effort to reach out to our residents, and those town halls showed what the county's needs were for transportation. Those town halls didn't necessarily present the fully, all of the needs of Hillsborough County. Many of the maps that we showed excluded the city of Tampa, Plant City, and Temple Terrace in their presentations. So what we are today, in looking at our response and the information, need to consider representing all of the needs of the residents and businesses of our county and cities, and recognize that a significant number of our unincorporated counties' residents actually work and conduct business, support our arts and cultural investments all around the county. So I'm really glad that we did the outreach. It was very helpful. We heard good information all the way across the board, across all of the different elements of transportation, and I look forward to the next item on the agenda. Are there any other comments? Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Yeah, I just want to point out for the record that even 5,200 messages from constituents still amounts to well less than 1% of the population of this county. People are busy. They're working. They're working harder than ever trying to stay ahead in this economic climate. They're raising kids, you know, they're trying to have a little time to themselves occasionally. Our system of government is designed to work in such a way that they entrust us, as their elected officials, to do the public's business, to do things like develop a plan that is well-balanced and equitable for people across this county. So I just wanted to point out that, you know, I'm not seeing any kind of a mandate from the public on any, you know, sort of a particular plan. It's up to us, as their elected representatives, to come up with a plan ultimately that addresses the county's needs and the needs across the entire county. So I guess we'll move to, that'll be up to you to introduce that, Madam Chair, but I believe that you're going to introduce item F4 next, and when we get to that item, I'd certainly like to make some additional comments.
Understood. And we actually did hear from 57% of the voters in 2018, so that's a pretty big percentage. With that, I will move on. Is there any other comments, Ms. Wise?
Thank you. Yes, the next item is item F4. This is Commissioner Myers' item regarding the transportation surtax.
Mr. Myers, you're recognized.
Good morning, and thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to thank all speakers who gave public comments regarding the transportation sales surtax. Also, I would like to give my gratitude to All for Transportation, Christina Barker, Rena Fraser, Todd Hudson, Preston Rudy, J.D. White, and others who played a pivotal role in 2018 in getting over 57% of the voters to vote for Hillsborough County transportation needs. Your unwavering commitment to transportation sales surtax is evident why another transportation sales surtax referendum is needed on November 8, 2022. I had the pleasure to attend all five of the county's open houses and listening to our citizen telling us what they need and saw on our display boards. But one of the questions would always come up is where's the money? How's the money being spent? And will we get our refund back? So I've asked the clerk of the court, Cindy Stewart, would she give us a report? Cindy? Cindy Stewart?
So I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, County Administration, and good morning to the public who's there present. I am Cindy Stewart. I am your Hillsborough County Clerk of the Court and Comptroller. Commissioner Myers asked me to speak earlier this week to you this morning to provide you a brief overview of the status of the collected dollars from All for Transportation surtax. Pursuant to the charter amendment, I was directed to distribute those collected surtax dollars to NPO, HART, Hillsborough County, Temple Terrace, Plant City, and the city of Tampa. The surtax, as you know, was collected from January 2019 to August of 2021 here in Hillsborough County, and a total amount collected to date is just over $562 million. Prior to the Supreme Court ruling, my office distributed $487 million of those collected funds as, to the appropriate stakeholders. So what that basically means is that we have money sitting with the stakeholders right now. The remaining funds that have not been distributed are sitting with the clerk's office. So about $80.5 million were collected after the court ruling, and those remain undistributed and with my office. I gave to Commissioner Myers a slide that shows kind of where the breakdown is for the distributed and undistributed funds. If you could bring that up. That shows Temple Terrace currently has $4.1 million approximately.
Ms. Stewart, Ms. Stewart, just a moment. We're, okay, it's showing on the screen now. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
There you go. So this shows a breakdown of where the distributed and undistributed funds are. Temple Terrace has $4.1 million. Plant City has approximately $5.9 million. The city of Tampa has approximately $57.8 million. Hillsborough County, so the B.O.C.C. coffers, have $192.2 million. HART has $216 million of the dollars, and the NPO, now known as TPO, has $4.8 million. In our offices, we are sitting on undistributed dollars of $80.5 million. So again, the total amount collected to date is $562 million, and at this time, my office is waiting for direction from the court on what to do with these dollars, whether they get refunded or redistributed or used in some other manner. But at this point, I think the clarification is the dollars are collected, they have been distributed to the appropriate stakeholders as per the county charter, and we are waiting direction from the court.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Ms. Stewart, in hope that many residents that asked questions had the opportunity to hear this presentation from you this morning. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
One name I failed to mention for All for Transportation was Kevin Thurman, who played a very instrumental role in helping us in 2018. On March 3, 2021, I presented a 1% transportation sales tax timeline in which we voted to consider another referendum in November 22 to fund transportation needs. There's no shortage of shovel-ready projects to fund. Staff from local government, cities of Tampa, Plant City, Temple Terrace, and HART and TPO have drawn up extensive lists calling for hundreds of millions of dollars to resurface roads, repair bridges, add lengthy turn lanes, improve intersection, new and upgrade traffic signals, build sidewalks and back path, completion of heavy maintenance building, enhance bus shelter, and new technology, and perform other work. Taxpayers will see money put to work on improvements that were tangible and offer quick release. An economy reeling from the coronavirus pandemic, higher gas prices, and a wall, the spending would amount to a local stimulus, creating jobs, generating additional taxes, and churning millions of dollars across the region. The tone of this board meeting will reflect a sea of change on transportation that will help mobilize supporters, the business community, and voters. And if we could continue to agree, our transportation system is lost without a new revenue source, imperiling the region's ability to attract new industry, residents, and matching federal dollars. Last week, I included an initial draft proposal aligned with the agenda item. My purpose in doing that was not to establish an absolute proposal, but to stimulate our thoughts processed on how best to meet the county's transportation needs. While I strongly believe the Board of County Commissioners need to have a flexible in allocating sales tax dollars to address our community extensive transportation needs, I also am smart enough to realize that flexibility might make some people uneasy, and that might prefer that our sales tax dollar is aligned with dedicated categories or buckets for maintenance, safety, congestion relief, and other improvements to our transportation network, such as trails and back lanes. Therefore, after spending over a year promoting this transportation initiative to my constituents and listening to the public at all five town halls held recently, I am willing to consider options to allocate those sales tax dollars. However, I feel that we need to be honest about our transportation needs and allocate funding accordingly. Toward that end, I believe our maintenance bucket should be at least equal to our safety bucket. Both of those should have a minimum of 27% dedicated to those activities. Both of those categories rank highly with the people I've spoken with about our transportation needs. They both should be given equal consideration when addressing our deficiencies, just like a house need regular maintenance. So do our roads, sidewalks, and bridges. Maintaining our existing transportation assets also is a primary objective in Board Policy Congestion reduction is another category that is important to our residents. We should consider keeping that bucket at a minimum of 26%. Those projects will help improve intersections and extend turn lanes so that people can move quickly, easy, throughout their neighborhood and the entire community. Lastly, we should consider keeping a minimum of 12% allocated in the transportation network improvement bucket. That category would aid sidewalks, would add sidewalks, help create safe routes to school, and build more trails. The citizens I spoke with wants to need these types of amenities of keeping their children safe and to provide enhanced recreational opportunities for families throughout our county. That leaves us up to 8% in remaining funds to be used as permitted by Florida statute This category also could be used to fund shortfalls in other buckets or to match emerging grants opportunity from the federal or state governments. Ultimately, this category gives us a small cushion of flexibility to use as necessary or as an opportunity arises. Finally, I believe we have such extensive transportation needs in Hillsborough County to acquire an increase in sales tax funds allocated to the county and our municipalities. I would propose that the county and the municipalities receive 59% of the surtax funds, HART would receive 42%, and the TPO would receive a half a percent. I also would propose that we remove the restriction on construction of new travel lanes as those may be necessary in some circumstances to improve traffic flow. We commissioners hear from people every day about potholes and cracking sidewalks, about bottlenecked intersections, and about the lack of safety routes to school, our dedicated trails amenities. We've heard from our staff and the staff of our community partners about the need we face to maintain and repair our transportation assets while also looking into the future. Now I'm interested in hearing from my colleagues on the board. As the saying goes, politics is the heart of compromise, and I do believe that I can work within the aisle and across the aisle. I think I'm amped demonstrated, I think I've amply demonstrated my willingness and desire to place this important transportation surtax initiative on the ballot. However, one of my primary goals would be to ensure our county has sufficient resources to maintain and enhance our transportation system throughout the county. Let us all join together to agree on an allocation of sales tax dollars that addresses our critical need both today and in the future. Madam Chair, I would like to discuss and hear from the colleagues on this item and then come back and make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Myers, I always handwrite notes for myself to keep myself on task when I'm speaking, and I've jotted down two pages worth of notes here. I just want to say that originally I had had, towards the close, as part of my closing comments, to thank those who've made, that have made honest efforts towards a compromise, and to thank you in particular for your great leadership and statesmanship throughout this process. And I just wanted to move those comments to the front because, you know, you've said in your opening remarks that you want to be collegial and reach across the aisle and see if we can come up with something that's truly a compromise. I will say that 57% did vote to pass a referendum in 2018, and I believe that the people very much thought they were voting on a roads tax. There's evidence that has been introduced to the courts that substantiates that the campaign in favor of that referendum marketed it as a roads plan, but the public now better has an understanding of exactly what is in the details of the plan. A plan for roads sells when you're trying to get a referendum passed. The plan before us right now in its draft form is not a roads plan, as I see it, and I'm just seeking honesty and transparency for the public. The spending plan for these revenues should be based on the facts and the needs of the entire community. I was somewhat surprised and frankly frustrated to have been told initially that there was a plan with three so-called buckets in play, and that very quickly morphed over a 24-hour period into the five so-called buckets, which look a lot like those that were included in the 2018 referendum. So I'd like to ask our county administrator, Ms. Wise, what led to, or what drove that very quick change from a three so-called bucket plan to a five so-called bucket plan? very quick change from a three so-called bucket plan to a five so-called bucket plan?
Well, I think when, and I'd really defer to Commissioner Myers since it was her agenda item, although staff did work with her on the, on the three plan. What we did was is we really used the original five buckets and condensed them into three to provide additional flexibility for the ability to address the needs of the county, but the elements of each of those buckets remain, whether it's the five or the three. So it's really quite similar.
And Commissioner Myers, I'll just say for the record that I thought the, the plan with the three so-called buckets was a compromise. And I, and I say it's a compromise because my position would be zero buckets, that any funds coming to the county should be unrestricted to be spent on transportation projects allowed by 212.055. So they would have to be spent on transportation projects, of course. I mean, that's the law. This is a transportation surtax, but why the additional restrictions or so-called buckets? Our portion should be unrestricted. But as a compromise, I liked the three bucket plan. I just wanted to state that for the record. So another question for our county administrator is how would HART spend 40 to 45%, let's say 42%, that's the number that was thrown out today, how would they spend these revenues over a 30-year period? I'd like to know if HART has produced an itemized spending plan, so I'll stop there.
So I think the, the board members who sit on the HART board would probably answer that better than I, but I do understand that as recently as their meeting this week, that their CEO did present a plan to the board that showed the use of 45% of the revenue. I was not there, but that is my understanding that that presentation was given.
So if that was presented to their board, it's certainly a public record then, so I'd like to formally request today that when the draft ordinance comes back to the board for consideration, that that plan be presented to the board. I'd like to see their itemized plan for the 30-year period, and I'd like to see a breakdown of how much HART would propose to spend on things like a downtown trolley, a ferry, and CSX rail lines. Ms. Wise, back, back to you. I, I'd like to get a feel for, you know, we've had the three so-called buckets, the five so-called buckets. Exactly how was that plan developed? What's the, what's the data that substantiates those plans?
I believe the original plan from 2018 was based on information provided by the then MPO, now TPO. And we have spent the last year or more talking to you all about, in the various workshops, about the county's needs, and especially unincorporated area counties specifically, as was mentioned earlier, that was emphasized. So our needs, as we know, are great, and, but those numbers originally came from the TPO.
So we have the TPO that sits and develops transportation plans, but do, do they match up with the county needs when you look at our CIP and our resurfacing needs, whatnot?
I would really defer to John Lyons to speak to that, but the TPO should be getting information from all of the entities in order to propose, you know, their numbers. And, you know, certainly John Lyons knows our numbers better than anybody, and the city of Tampa knows their numbers better than anybody, but the TPO is responsible for coordinating all of that information.
So I'll ask Mr. Lyons, you know, we have roads that need to be widened, we have a resurfacing list that's voluminous, we probably need to build some new stretches of road throughout the county. I mean, would this, would this plan that's before us address the funding needs for our CP, our CIP and, and resurfacing list?
Commissioner, I think, I think the first question you asked was regarding the information that was in the 2018 referendum. And I, you know, I don't know the age of that information. We do share information with the TPO on an annual basis. I'll be the first to admit that we've put a lot of elbow grease into looking at the system over the last year and a half through a lot of inspections, a lot of assessments, cost of increase on a lot of things since 2018, the cost of asphalt, those type of things as well. And so I'm standing by the numbers that we had presented to the board through our three workshops on what our needs are in particular, if that's, answers your question on that.
So, so the plan that's, that's in its current state with the, the five buckets and the percentages that have been laid out, would, would that fund our needs?
So I, so I think what we discussed was that our annual maintenance need was about $70 million. We have about $5 to $6 million of existing funding coming from the fuel tax. I think, I haven't done hard math on those calculations, but I think depending on how the shares are distributed to the cities, you know, it would be the need to make up that $63 to $64 million in maintenance would have to be to get us to the place where we need to be. I think that the percentage of 27% to the maintenance category would fall short of that.
Okay. And then, I mean, I think the record, I think the record should reflect that an expert on our staff is telling us that, you know, with a levy that's, by all accounts, is projected to bring in about $15 billion over a 30-year period, would, would fall short. If it's, if it's divvied up as the draft plan before us would indicate, we would fall short of meeting our resurfacing needs.
I have several members in the queue. Commissioner White?
Yes, ma'am. I'm, I'm, I'm getting there. Mr. Lyons, at the, at the time that we were debating the 2018 referendum, I did my own math on, on what we would be able to do in terms of road widening, and at the time, I think my math showed that we'd be able to widen about three quarters of a mile of road per year with the old spending plan. Now, this new spending plan shifts the percentages around a bit, and it also lifts that restriction on added road capacity. But have you done an analysis on how many lane miles of road we would be able to widen on an annual basis with the spending plan that's before us today as it stands right this very minute?
I have not.
Okay. I, I'd like to ask for that, to come back to the board. You know, I know when we're looking out 30 years, we're going to have to adjust for growth in revenue and inflationary factors on what it costs to build roads and things like that, but I'd like to get an idea, as it stands right now in, in the draft form that's before us today, how many lane miles of road in unincorporated Hillsborough County over the 30-year period would we be able to, to achieve?
Commissioner White?
Ms. Wise, I'm going to ask for, for a bit more information to be presented to the board when this draft referendum, draft ordinance comes to the board. If we look at the whole pie, all the revenues, okay, I would like to see a minimum and maximum dollar range, let's just forget about percentages and just look at raw dollars. As the plan stands, a minimum and maximum dollar range that could go to mass transit projects, a minimum and maximum dollar range that could go to road widening, a minimum and maximum dollar range that could go to road resurfacing, a minimum and maximum dollar range that could go to building new sidewalks, a minimum and maximum range that could go to repairing sidewalks, and a minimum and maximum dollar range that could go to miscellaneous transportation projects, including but not limited to things like trails and intersection And that would be for the, for the, for the 30-year period, projected out over the 30 years. I'm just going to close by reminding everyone that a successful plan needs to be one that's well-balanced. We're dealing with 7.9% inflation, gas that's over $4 a gallon, stock market that's off by at or near double digits, the uncertainty surrounding the war in Europe, and the uncertainty surrounding the $500 million plus collected from the unlawful referendum that has yet to be dealt with. I want to see this move forward and see where we land in terms of trying to arrive at a plan that's a true compromise and benefits this entire community equitably. I think if we had something on the table today that looked like the three so-called bucket plan that was described to me, I think I could be a yes vote today to, to move forward and see what we can get in front of us at the meeting when we hold the public hearing and have the draft here, but, but if it's going to be the, the five bucket plan that looks so much like the 2018 plan, even though some small concessions have been made, I think that I would be a no vote today, just to signal where I would be in the end. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I noticed, Commissioner White, you say, you could be a yes or no vote today, but I'm wondering if you ever would be a yes vote to put a one cent sales tax on the ballot for transportation?
The devil's, the devil's in the details, depends on what the plan looks like.
Okay. And I'll just, I don't want to, there's, there's a lot to say, and I think Ronald, Ron Weaver did a great job this morning saying it as quickly as you could in three minutes about the extraordinary importance of a well-funded transit system. And I will just pull a few things out of there, and I'll, I'll note this for the record. In Palm Beach, Miami-Dade, Broward Counties, Orange County, Duval, in all these counties, but in the state of Florida, Pasco County, but for Hillsborough and Pinellas, the way transit systems are supported are with hundreds of millions of dollars in each of those counties that come from countywide funds. The only two counties in the whole state of Florida that I know of, no one's ever contested this, that don't do that are, are Hillsborough and Pinellas. That has left us as the most starved and underfunded transit system in the nation, bar none, for a metro area this size, this size. We are not just a little bit, we are massively underfunded, critical, critically underfunded, and equal to Sheboygan, Wisconsin. I thought it was really interesting that Ms. Royster, getting her award this morning, pointed out to us, to remind us. She was a pedestrian all her life. She's a pedestrian all her life, and she said, "I waited an hour for my bus." Right now, HART has 30 routes, as was said to us during the workshop, which was news to me. I think it's a really good way to look at it. 30 routes, 19 of those routes are hourly service. That is shameful, shameful, but that's not HART's fault. HART's using its money extraordinarily well. We only have 11 routes that are a half hour or under. You can go to cities all over America and find five-minute routes, 10-minute routes. You know, I was, you know, in Seattle, and the, the buses are lining up on the streets. I mean, it is, what we have done and how we have raised our misery index in our community, both in terms of transit-oriented development, lifting people out, getting them to their jobs, to their doctors, to their hospitals, there, we heard, by the way, this morning, all the speakers, practically, except for Ms. Calvert, who lives in Pinellas County, you know, were talking about how important transit is to making a, a place live, survive, and be able to work at the kind of densities that we have. And it's just so important that we look at the transit funding, and I just, because I think maybe I, my math didn't work out the same way, and maybe I heard it wrong, because what I heard you suggest, Commissioner Myers, was 59% for the counties, 42% for HART, and .5% for the TPO, but of course, that comes to 101.5%. So, so what, I just wanted to check on that.
It's fuzzy math, and I'm going to correct it. Okay, great.
So what would that correction be?
Go ahead, Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. It would be for the county and municipalities, 59%, 40% to HART, and a half a percent to TPO.
Okay. Hearing that, I will most definitely not be supporting that as it is. I would have to make, I would ask you to please do, you know, when you consider putting forward your resolution that, that you're putting forward, that it be, I want to keep, and I think it's a promise that I need to keep myself in what I've done in my campaign. It's a promise that the mayor wrote us all a letter, all the elected officials here last night, saying that she had made that promise. I want to be a promise to the voters of this county. 57% voted for 2018. They well knew what those percentages were in 2018. For the 45% for transit, I'm okay with the .5% for the TPO, and if we do the, the balance of that 54.5%, we can give, you know, another .5%. I would ask you to put forward that. Would be my strong suggestion to have, you know, my support on this, because I can't, I cannot stray that desperately far. I, I will not do that to the voters without at least trying to do something different because we had 57% support. And I'm going to point out something that's rarely pointed out. I pointed out some of the other facets of our transit, and, and, thank you, Ron Weaver, see, you're in the, thank you for the talking points that are just remarkable because he, he brought up almost everything I could ever think of in moving forward, but I think this is one of the things that's rarely said or noticed, and you said, there are 115,000 blind and disabled people in this county, many elderly, that need our transit system to get to hospitals, food, education, and family. And that's not even talking about the people that use our bus system that also need it for that. That's not talking about aging in place that we say we want. That's not talking about transit-oriented development. I, I almost feel like I should not be putting down any more densities at all, even in the urban area because of our so desperately underfunded transit. And I will say that the presentation that was made at HART showed that we get the full 45%. All that that does is gets us 32% of the unfunded projects that are on the transit development plan for the next 30 years. It only gets us to 32% of those unfunded projects for the next 30 years. This is not, 45% of this to transit gets us to a modest, basic transit system in this county, and I don't see how we do less than that. I don't see how we do less than that. In fact, we have to do more than that, but I'm really concerned to move forward on the promise that we made to the voters, that I made to the voters in my reelection. I know the mayor has said the same thing over and over again when she ran for mayor, and she reminded us of that last night. They said it at the workshop, feeling strongly that there needs to be 45% for transit. So I do feel very strongly about that, and I hope that when you bring the motion forward, that you will bring 45% for transit.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. Next to recognize is Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just want to start out by saying that what is, I think, wonderful about this conversation is that we are actually talking about the details of a plan and actually putting our foot forward to do something about an issue that has been crying out for our leadership, certainly since the voters approved it in 2018. And I do, you know, the one comment I want to make to Commissioner White's comments are that I'm reminded of the old saying that you shouldn't throw out the good for the sake of the perfect. And the fact that we know that no matter what we do, we're not going to actually have enough to solve every single problem that we have, shouldn't prevent us from doing something now and taking as bold of a step as we can toward solving some of our well-acknowledged transportation problems. I want to say, first of all, Commissioner Myers, I want to congratulate you on taking this on and being willing to put something forward. It is tough because everyone is sniping at you, I'm sure, from every single direction. I will tell you that I was prepared to support exactly what you proposed originally at the 42% with what is now five buckets. I have to tell you, this business between the three and the five buckets, as I've looked at it, I don't really see a whole lot of difference between the two. I was persuaded by what Commissioner Smith said during the workshop, that people want some certainty about what they're voting on. And as a result of that, I, you know, I'm really willing to go along with whatever the pleasure of the board is on that item. I want to just talk for a minute about the percentages. I supported the 2018 referendum with the 45% to Hart and the 1% to the TPO. I think that in the four years that has passed, there has been a little bit of a change. There are two things that I would point out. The first is that I think there's probably agreement here, given the amount of monies that have come in, that the TPO can do with .5% rather than with 1%. I'm the chair of the TPO. I've been on it for 10 years. I have a lot of confidence, actually, in the planning that's been done, and I think that awful lot of the work is already there with priorities already laid out. And my understanding is that they do line up very well with what has been requested by the municipalities and by Hillsborough County. The thing that I think has changed in terms of Hillsborough County's needs, well, one thing hasn't changed. Our safety record hasn't changed at all. We are still just absolutely abysmally low when it comes to pedestrian, bicycle, and every kind of safety measure that is out there. And in the four years that have passed, things have just continued to deteriorate and get worse. The thing that's changed is that we now have a school crisis on top of it. We now have a situation where we know that we need additional schools, particularly in South County, and my understanding is that one of the major impediments to them being built is that all the proposed sites are on substandard roads. So when you combine that with the fact that the state has now mandated that there's not going to be bus service for students who are within two miles of a school, and we have kids walking on inadequate sidewalks or no sidewalks or no shoulders, I think that immediate safety need has actually gotten worse for the county in the intervening four years. So I really could live with the 42% because, number one, I still think it's a robust amount of funding for Hart. But number two, and even more important, we are in a position to give Hart additional money if they have projects that they want to fund, just like we voted to give them additional money for their maintenance facility recently. So I think the flexibility is there. I don't know the flexibility would occur in the other direction, though. So I think that it might be better to err on the side of having a little bit more for us and the municipalities, and again, very, very close to the numbers from 2018. So where I come down on that is, I think, really, the 42% number is the right number. I want to finally just close my comments by saying that there are a lot of statements, well, about inflation and about gas prices, and there is no question that we are in a challenging moment in this country and that people are feeling very stressed in a lot of different directions. But I would submit to you that the congestion that we have, the safety problems that we have, and our inability to continue to grow if we do not do something about our infrastructure needs, is going to create just as big of a problem for us as the immediate things that are causing people to have constraint in their own pocketbooks. So I really think that the time is now because we can't wait until we have a perfect situation in order to do this. We have to do it now. We have to do it for all the things that we've mentioned. So I would like to see us compromise around 42% for Hart, a little bit more for the municipalities for some of the items that I've mentioned, and, you know, see where we go from there.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I want to start by thanking Commissioner Myers. This is a tough thing to bring forward with all the pushing from all sides, and wherever we land, it takes courage and leadership. And I thank you for being the person willing to bring this forward today on the board. But most of all, I appreciate and am grateful that you brought it to us in this way that had a 40% to 45% space for us to work with, and that you were willing to think about our comments at the workshop and kind of change the buckets on the way in light of us. I mean, I feel like we are, you are helping us and leading us to work together and discuss this and come to consensus in a way that, you know, really, as Commissioner White says, shows statesmanship, stateswomanship, as well as leadership. And I very much appreciate that, wherever this goes. Our transportation needs are extreme on all fronts, for roads and road maintenance, for intersection improvements, for transit, for multimodal bike and safety improvements and infrastructure. And I too want to thank Mr. Weaver for his research in noting that this transportation tax, as it was originally proposed, would result in a 40% or 40-something percent, I'm going to read your notes, reduction in crashes. I mean, in this most dangerous state that we're in, county that we're in, it's really important, and that's one of the reasons, Commissioner Cohen, that I really wanted to see some specificity, particularly in that, I believe it was the 12% piece that you put forward for trails and sidewalks and infrastructure. Because, you know, I just think it's important to have that specificity, the accountability, and the guardrails on where this goes to protect future commissions from the buffeting of a large landowner who wants a road over here, or, you know, some other political force that wants whatever they want over there, to say, "Yeah, but we still have to have 12% for the sidewalks and safety." And I know that that was, and bike trails, and I know that was important in the original referendum. But our needs are so great on all those fronts that this tax, as has been said, won't, you know, fix 100% any of it. It won't bring Hart to, you know, the height of London status. It won't reduce our crashes to vision zero. It won't pave all our roads. In fact, if we, and I've got the figures, we've done a lot of research on the money and the costs, if we offered the voters a new tax that only filled the potholes and did road repairs, we might be able to more or less cover that satisfactorily over the next 30 years. We might get to it all. But we still wouldn't be able to widen more than a mile or two of roads a year. So even 30 years wouldn't get us to all the road widening that we could do. And even then, with a tax that only did road maintenance and road widening, I don't think we'd get voter support. I really don't. And I'm not at all confident that we'd have even Commissioner White's support if we went down that path in our final vote that we have to do next month to put something on a tax on the ballot. And I don't, I'm not blaming anyone for that. I'm just, I'm just trying to say, this is the reality of politics today. We, you know, we, I greatly respect all of our perspectives and positions on this. But we are going to need four or five votes to put this on the ballot. So we all do need to consider how that's going to work. As far as Hart's share, you know, as we heard today, the speakers and the organizations who support this surtax strongly support funding transit as a key component of our transit system. Mayor Castor sent us a letter conveying the city's support for 45% for Hart. The Tampa Bay Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Urban League today, spoke in strong support of transit. Mr. Weaver spoke eloquently as ever in support of transit. And Ms. Royster couldn't have been more moving in the lived experience of the needs for transit among all our citizens, the disabled, to the blind, to the people who need affordable housing where every single person can't afford to own a car and needs to be in transit-oriented development to get to work, to get to school, to get to their dialysis appointments. As Commissioner Overman pointed out, we have the record of 57% support among our county's voters for this surtax in its original form. And the support for this surtax, I think, is going to come largely from the same support as the original support, as we heard today, from the chamber, from the other organizations, the Urban League. So I'm a little perplexed that now there is this few people pushing for a last-minute wrangling over a couple of percentage points, one way or the other, for the transit piece. And I would ask us to pick our battles here, and not fuss over one or two percentage points, but stay the course and support the referendum's original distribution to the cities and to the transit, to the transit piece. So I am hoping for a 45% piece for transit in what we direct our staff to bring forward. I'm okay with a little bit of tweaking, tweaking the TPO piece for if there's room in the, you know, I think what you've been doing in your unrestricted budget is putting more of that to maintenance, and I agree that that piece, we've learned over the last four years, our roads have deteriorated even more. I believe that could use more of that unrestricted piece. So that's what I'm looking for and hoping for today, is something that stays the course, where I can go back to my constituents and the voters and say, "We're giving you another chance at what you've already done in large measure." Same distribution for the cities, for Hart, for the county, with a little adjustment in what we now know is the county's buckets. And that's what I would ask you to consider in the motion today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to keep my remarks brief. I know this has been going on for quite a while now. First of all, I want to commend Commissioner Myers on her leadership on this issue, and I particularly want to thank you for your pragmatic approach in trying to find not only the right balance of improvements that will address our needs, but more importantly, come up with a plan that is politically palatable. I've been a champion for transportation since I chaired the county's Transportation Task Force back in 2008. Nearly every position or argument stated today, I've heard for 14 years, irrespective of buckets or percentages. One thing I know for certain is that when you objectively look at this issue with billions of unfunded needs, it's not possible to adequately address our needs with existing revenues. You must have a dedicated funding source, and I've always recognized that. Now, over the years, I've seen a referendum be defeated, fail to reach the ballot, and a third referendum to pass, only to be overturned. So I think I've seen the good, the bad, and the ugly. I have twice voted to place a referendum on the ballot. For several commissioners, transit is their priority, and that's fine. For me, being in unincorporated Hillsborough, it's been, my priority's been on unfunded roads and sidewalks. We've heard over the last, I guess, several months regarding sidewalks, we're eight to 10 years behind. We just opened the first county-designed-and-built road, so just park extension, I want to say, in at least 10 years. And according to staff, that if fully funded, it will take 10 years to get us back on track and clear up the backlog with respect to resurfacing. I am going to say that I do have some concerns with this initiative, both from a timing and policy perspective. Today, I know we're asking for the ordinance to be drafted, and it's going to come back for public hearing and final approval, so I'm not going to get into all the details today. But let's just say that we'll see how the ordinance looks when it comes back, what direction the board's going, and then I'll make a final decision at that point. But in any event, I do appreciate, although I have heard all the arguments before, I think this is an excellent discussion, it's an excellent debate, and I'm hopeful that we can get to a plan that I'm comfortable with moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagan. I'd like to offer some comments, and then I'll defer to Commissioner Myers for the motion, if need be, or Commissioner White for comment. But, I mean, it's very clear, we're here today to develop a revenue solution for our transportation needs over the long term. And we actually have somewhat agreed on the most effective means of doing that is through a transportation surtax. So I think we're in more in agreement than disagreement, and I thank Commissioner Myers for championing the effort to make sure that we were going to bring this to the board's consideration this year, especially after having to live with the fact that we can't spend the monies that the Supreme Court found unconstitutional due to an oversight committee that gave citizens more power than this board had in making the decisions on how to spend the money, not for how the money was going to be spent in that original surtax. So it was found flawed, and we still have to resolve that. And we don't have that power because that power is still with the court and with the legislature to present us a plan in September, and the Department of Revenue to agree to it. So it is not in our hands to address what happened in the past when it comes to what happened to the money. But it is in our power to decide how to move forward. And by having the county commission offer the voters an opportunity to support a surtax referendum, we have this time in November to do that, and now's the time to get this done. Five commissioners on this board serve on the Transportation Commission and develop our long-term transportation plans that are incorporated in our Transportation Improvement Plan that this board approves every year. Four commissioners on this board Four commissioners on this board sits on the Hart board to develop and adopt our transit, transportation plans. It is not like we're planning on the fly here. It's not like we haven't heard what our needs are, and it's not like we haven't all heard what we need to do. What the surtax in 2018 has just outlined it in the referendum and communicated that to our publics, in our public in a wide, wide way. We, seven commissioners, must not silo our transportation and financial policies when it comes to adopting a revenue solution to meet our residents and our businesses' transportation needs. To answer Commissioner White's question, what we heard and learned from the county is that we are three, that even with, you know, a surtax, we would be $3.38 billion and still have $3.38 billion of unfunded needs over the next 30 years. We, as the boards and as the future boards, would have to come up with a financial strategy for making that need. This surtax is not going to answer all of the questions. What we also heard is that Hart, with that 45%, would still have $10.9 billion of unfunded needs over the next 30 years. What we heard from our cities were 10-year plans that clearly that they have, even with this surtax, would have unfunded needs. But we heard that also with a surtax, with a 1% surtax. And we heard this from our transportation planning organization, of which five members on this board sit and recognize this and learn this on an ongoing basis, that having a surtax, having a funding mechanism, would increase 84.3% of the funding for roads that would qualify, as a result of qualifying for more state and federal funding. It would also allow us to qualify for a 55% increase in transit funding, to allow us to qualify for the matching funds that are available in transportation funding. It is critically important that we not miss this opportunity to solve what we have clearly heard is an unfunded transportation need. And we've heard that over and over again. But to do this, we need our voters. Clarity on how this money is spent is critically important to this referendum being able to pass in November. And the current political environment is not one of great trust of government or elected officials. We have to offer transparency and clarity, in my opinion, if we want voters to support paying our transportation needs or helping pay for and address our transportation needs for both the current and future. We need our voters to believe that we have a plan. I believe if this funding helps us achieve certain transportation performance measures that are part of our long-term transportation plan and address each of the transportation elements that have been described not only in all of our workshops, but was previously described in our surtax, the B O C C could prioritize investments in accordance to our long-range transportation plan and align our transportation guidelines and funding rules for the long term. We've presented that not only at these meetings, but also at our partner agencies' meetings with the TPO as well as Hart. I still support distributing 54% to counties and cities proportionate to population and considering that the general purpose portion for that, for that particular amount, and 45% for Hart. If we need to negotiate for the amount for the TPO, I think it's important to recognize that our cities and all of us depend on their planning in order to help us know that we have goals and objectives and performance measures to address, to adopt, and to meet so that we have accountability in our actions as elected leaders making decisions on behalf of our citizens. I'm not necessarily in a disagreement with where we were, and I appreciate seeing how the numbers provides some flexibility. But again, we need our voters to vote for this. We can come up with all kinds of plans on the fly, but at the end of the day, it won't matter if the voters don't trust that we have a method of performance to meet. The 45% distributed to Hart for the purpose of addressing transit mobility includes enhancing bus service and expanding transit options, but it also addresses what five of the members on this board have agreed to in terms of equity in our transportation planning. And I think it's critically important that we realize that we have adopted that policy, and transit is one of the ways to address those individuals who have no other choice but to use the mobility options that are outlined in our long-range transportation plan. Adopting a Citizens Advisory Council to report and advise to the Board of County Commission would allow us to hear and address residents' transportation needs and opportunities for improvement, and will keep this board listening to our residents and guiding our transportation improvement plans and help with identifying priority, projects' priorities. Transportation congestion relief, safety improvement, and mobility options that include transit and complete streets and balanced approach in transportation planning is core to what the citizens of Hillsborough County have said to us year after year. And we really desperately need to address not only our urban, but especially our urban, urban, I'm sorry, rural and suburban counties that have grown so rapidly over the years. I think it's critically important that we, we give our voters something they have in the way of certainty. And it's not a small measure to accept that 57% were in a group, were in agreement with the plan that was presented in 18. I ran for office during that time period. I attended all of the meetings, as well as many other community meetings that weren't dedicated to transit and transportation. But I heard from our, our voters, and I fought for this seat to bring this issue forward as well, as I know Commissioner Myers has. The voters must trust in an investment plan. And 2018 made it very clear how they expected their elected officials to address our crucial infrastructure needs. And I think it's important that, that we show leadership and recognize that the delays has caused even more of a problem when it comes to short-term and long-term transportation policy. The disconnected silos between our planning, policy, and project management have created some dysfunction over the years and has been ineffective. And we have an opportunity as leaders to change that trajectory today. Our residents need us to lead responsibly and transparently. They need us to show leadership, to serve our residents and our businesses well, not only in the urban or suburban communities, as well as our rural communities and our emerging economies and those that are underserved in our community. The plans have, that's been discussed today, I agree, move the issues that were, remove the issues that were a problem in 2018. And I look forward to supporting the conversation moving forward. But we also have to be accountable. If we change so much that our voters don't vote for it, we will not be able to meet our needs, not only now, but for many, many years. And we've already seen what the delay since 18 has caused in the way of problems. So I look forward to supporting this, this conversation. I think it's incredibly important that we actually address real choices when it comes to transportation and that we've had a vision for what this investment looks like over the last 30 years. What we have to do now is secure the funding, at least for a portion of our unfunded needs, and make sure it's dedicated to transit, to safety, to protecting and enhancing our roads, trails, and transit assets, addressing congestion relief, and offering real choices for connectivity. All of these are policies the five of us have already adopted and that TPO has presented to us in our long-range transportation plan, as it's updated every 10 to 20 years. So we have adopted this strategy, and I'm looking forward to continuing on that path. The Transportation Improvement Plan require, that requires a single occupancy vehicle for a family to economically survive in this county is irresponsible and will not be a policy that will allow our communities to thrive, our businesses to thrive, and is in direct conflict to our responsibility towards equity. So I support the previous bucket, the previous allocation of the transportation plan that was presented in 2018, but I'm willing to hear some small changes that does not preclude Hart moving off the 45%, given it's the largest unfunded transportation strategy that we have heard, not only here, but at Hart, as well as the Transportation Planning Agency. And with that, I'll recognize Commissioner Hagan. Sorry. Okay. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. I have a question for Ms. Beck. Can this be advertised in such a way that the three-bucket plan could be, could be what's contained within the draft that the board discusses and debates, but that the board could ultimately land on a five-bucket plan? Can it be advertised in such a way that that could happen?
Yes, Commissioner. Our, our standard practice is to provide the notice that's required under the law to the voter or to the citizens so that they know what the board is considering. And we typically, even by policy and by law, drafted in a manner to provide flexibility so that when you hear from public comment at the public hearing, you're able to incorporate that into your policy. And so in all ordinances, we, we ensure that proper notice is given, but we drafted in a manner that provides as much flexibility to the elected body and to be able to hear from the public as possible.
Thank you. Commissioner Myers, I've listened to board discussion very closely, and I believe you have four votes to put your original three-bucket plan on the table. That could be a starting point for discussion and debate when this lands in front of the board at our public hearing. You've heard Ms. Beck say that, you know, if the people that want five buckets ultimately win the day, you know, that, that could, could happen in the end. But I would sure like to see the three-bucket plan be the starting point in the draft and, you know, see where it goes at the public hearing. I believe you have four votes for that, but it's certainly your initiative and your motion, but just wanted to, to, to make that plea with you.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized, and then Commissioner Myers.
Just want to point out, it could go either way, Commissioner Myers. I mean, you could, you could start out with the support of the people you're sure of, and then it, it could, at the end of the day, be, we could all agree to go a different way.
Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One thing I like about this board, we are wide open this morning to, to give all kinds of suggestions. But after hearing everyone's discussion, I'm going to ask Commissioners Kemp, Smith, and Overman to search your heart. I know you want Hart to receive the 45%. Given that we've had and held three transportation workshops and knowing what we know as commissioners, our own needs here in Hillsborough County, are you willing to reduce Hart percentage in order to help Hillsborough County, which John Lyons has done a remarkable job identifying our needs in three workshops that total over billions of dollars with our infrastructure projects? I just want to ask if you would search, I'm willing to compromise. You know, this is, this is what it is. This is what it's about.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Yes, I would just say, no, I want 45%. So I would have to make that and, and, you know, vote on that for better or for worse. It's a promise I made to the voters. It's in the 2018. I think we should mirror that as much as possible. And I don't think we should miss the fact that there, the Hart is the county as well. It's not different from the county. And there are, as I said, counties across the state of Florida have, they, as a regular basis, that's how their transit systems are funded, with hundreds of millions of dollars from their countywide resources. We are unique in that we do not do that. And I'll just, I, I know, Commissioner Cohen, you weren't here, but in the past, we had a knock-down drag-out in this boardroom that lasted for like a half hour over giving Hart $200,000 for para-transit vans, 200,000. That happened, and that could happen again. And I want to make sure that we secure that funding. And as I said before, the para-transit is a huge element that people do not realize. 16% of Hart's budget goes to para-transit resources, and that's not including those people that need the buses for that or need transit for that. That's specifically the para-transit program. So I think it's, it's, it would be a, a real loss for Hillsborough County to not have this. And I do think there's other ways as well for us to fund. We're going to have to keep working at it. As everybody has said, this is not a panacea for anyone. This is not doing the road needs, the repaving needs totally. But as I said before, it's only for, if you go to the 45% with the 30-year plan that Hart has there, all that does is it's, it beats 32% of its unfunded needs. It is, that is a way bigger need than the county has articulated in terms of unfunded needs. And I'm not saying, there are not desperate needs everywhere. And, and again, Commissioner Cohen, I know you pointed out the roads outside of schools as being a concern, and you said that that's a problem with schools locating and that need. And I know that you don't have the history on the board that I've had here, but I will tell you clearly, that was not the problem. The problem was our impact fees were so desperately low for schools, they, they went from something like $4,200 to more than, twice that, to start equalling Pasco, Polk, Manatee, and every other county in the state. We had not upped it for 14 years. It was miserably low, and therefore they had to keep saving up impact fee dollars to build a school. We have remedied that somewhat, but that is, that is, has not been the problem with the school building issue, that we haven't been able to keep up with the roads, it's true. But that has not been what held up the problems with school locations. Just, just to be clear here about what has caused our problems, I think this gives a good shot at different percentages, at different abilities to, to move forward in helping all these areas of transportation in Hillsborough County.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Smith, did you want to address Commissioner Myers' question? Although she's not here at the moment.
I said my piece. As I look at the figures, you know, we're really haggling over a few million dollars a year.
Right.
And I am sorry to see that there are forces that have pushed this board to that haggling. And I, I just think that it's, it would be wiser in many, many ways to give the voters back what they passed and to be able to stand on that rather than starting to explain what's different and what we did and why it's not more this way or more, or more that way. When, when we're really, you know, talking about a few million, I know a million here, a million there, pretty soon it adds up to real money, but I, I, I don't think it's worth doing that in, in comparison with staying the course. And that's, so that's where I'm. Commissioner Myers, I don't know how much of that you heard. All right. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for the question. I appreciate it. And I, I know, you know, we have heard from our partners, and we have heard that Hart's unfunded need is $10.9 billion as opposed to Hillsborough County's need of $3.8 billion over 30 years. So it's very clear Hart has a much larger... So it's very clear Hart has a much larger unfunded need than any of our partners to be able to achieve at least the basic core services. And I think it's, you know, the reason people don't quote-unquote "ride the bus" is because we only have 30 buses, first routes. People don't have that as a choice, and that is just disgraceful, in my opinion. So that's not a real commitment to transportation that is comprehensive and important for us to compete with our other metropolitan communities. We are the fourth-largest population base in Florida, and we have 30 routes. That's shameful. But my point also is that we heard that the Surtax funding will increase to 85% of the funding for roads. If we are able to get our voters to vote for this, we will have a 55% increase in transit funding by having a Surtax if we can get our voters to vote for this. And I think it's critically important that we recognize that there was an infrastructure bill that was passed this year. Okay? There was, our residents will miss out if we can't get this done. If we can't get our voters to trust that we're bringing them a thoughtful, performance-based plan to invest in our infrastructure, our residents will miss out on the largest infrastructure investment made by the United States government in history by this country because we won't have the local matching investment dollars to compete for those federal dollars. And I want to make clear, those federal dollars, those federal monies in the bipartisan investment, bipartisan infrastructure investment and Jobs Act funding that was approved this year that will bring $65 billion to investments in infrastructure and jobs will not be available to us if we don't have matching dollars. And so it is critical that we bring to our voters something they have confidence that has a method that's based on investment planning. And that's what we've seen, and that's what was offered before. And what we heard from the Transportation Planning Organization was thoughtful performance measure, goals and priorities and objectives to be able to meet our needs. And that did correspond with a need for at least 45% towards our transit investments, however that happens. So I would like to stick with the 40, 45. I do recognize there may need to be some flexibility on the other elements, but I'm willing to suggest that the best way to accomplish that is to stick with our long-range transportation elements and in the appropriate allocations. And I'll stop there. Sorry. With that, Commissioner White?
Thank you. Commissioner Myers, you just asked three colleagues for compromise and received a no. My position is 0% to Hart, zero buckets. But I'm willing to meet you at 42% to Hart, half percent to the TPO, and the remainder divided among the county and cities with three buckets for the county. I'm willing to meet you there. I think there are four votes to do that. And if you'll put that on the table today as the plan, I might just surprise some people at the public hearing. So I just wanted to put that on the record for you.
I appreciate it.
I feel like this is a game show.
Exactly. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Well, I don't think it's a game show. I actually think that it is reasonable for people to have different views on the details of this plan. And I think it is somewhat condescending to imply that having those disagreements reflects a lack of understanding of what the county's overall needs are. I don't think that we're all so far apart as to not have the ability to have nuanced and reasonable differences. I said earlier that I am, I actually don't want to throw a wrench into what Commissioner White said, but I really was persuaded of the need for the five buckets because I understand that the certainty that, about how this money is going to be spent and the accountability that goes along with that is crucial to persuading people to vote for it. So I want to be clear that I don't want to go along with a three-bucket option. I don't feel comfortable with that. But I will say that I am disappointed that there wasn't an ability to reach a compromise on the issue of the 45 versus 42%. I think reasonable people can disagree about whether or not, given the many workshops we have sat through here about what the county's needs are, and again, what our safety needs are, that the amount of money for the counties and the municipalities shouldn't have been bumped up just a little bit. I would also say that, you know, in terms of the issue with the schools, we can debate for a long time how we got to where we are. I have no doubt that the lack of sufficient impact fees over the 30 years was a major contributing factor to the problems that we have now. But that problem bravely by this board before I got here was remedied with an increase in impact fees. And the fact of the matter is, today, we have these needs around the schools that really are going to delay our ability, I think, to solve our capacity issues. I never said that I wouldn't ultimately support a plan with a 45%. What I said was that I was going to vote for the 42% because in my humble estimation, I just think that it better reflects where we are today. And by the way, 42% to Hart is a huge number. It's a tremendous increase over where we are today, and it will get us to a much more robust transit system than we could even dream of having if we don't do this. So I'm going to be in support of whatever you put forward. But I want to be clear that my advocacy for the 42% has, is totally based on my belief that the four years that we have lost has exacerbated the problems on our roads and that we just need some, a little bit addition, a little bit of additional revenue to deal with the backlog. And I will stop at that.
Commissioner Myers, do you want to go before Commissioner Kemp's back in the queue? Okay, Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Yes. I'm sorry if anyone felt offended by anything that was said. And again, as well as everyone else, I am very pleased that you brought this forward and brought it forward in the way that you did and promoted this dialogue. And on my part, there's been no intention of offending anyone, but just really pointing out kind of some of the history and the public policy that we've been through and where I see some of those needs as well. And some that, you know, may not, it may not be clear that, and I very much appreciate that we made a contribution, a significant contribution to the Hart Transit Maintenance and Operations Center. That was great, but that hasn't always been and may not always be for 30 years. I do think it is disappointing to, you know, be over dealing with this 3%. And as I said, just kind of for the record, I really have to go on record with where I have promised that I'd be in 2018. So no, and I appreciate the robust discussion. I appreciate the presentation brought forward. You did ask where we could be, and I did answer, you know, as I felt like I have promised very much when I was re-elected and have stood on that the entire time and expected that actually to be what we would go forward with when we went forward this time. So I'll defer to what you put forward, but I would, you know, I'll need an opportunity to express, I think, what I, you know, had promised to make good to the voters.
Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Yeah, these will be my final comments, Madam Chair. I know that Commissioner Myers is ready to take the floor, but I have to put Commissioner Cohen on the spot. I mean, you said you don't want to throw a wrench in what I've said. You've said clearly that you prefer the five-bucket plan. You did go on to say, though, that you would support whatever Commissioner Myers puts on the floor. So, you know, I want to ask you if you'll compromise with me and ask if Commissioner Myers puts a three-bucket plan on the floor, if you'll support it, knowing that that's a starting point for the public hearing. We can see where the chips fall at that point, but, you know, I'd very much like to see that as where we begin.
Commissioner Cohen, would you like to respond?
Quite frankly, I don't think, based on what the county attorney said, that that's all that important of an issue at this moment. It sounds to me like they can draft this in such a way that either of those two things are acceptable going forward. And I would also submit, not to keep the conversation going forever, that I don't see why the actual percentage number has to be decided and stoned today either. I mean, we're all very, very close, and when we meet again in two weeks or whenever it is that we decide, we're going to have to make a decision on what's going to ultimately go forward. But I don't know that the specificity matters 100%. She's shaking her head, yes, on either of those two issues. I mean, the way I see it, and I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Kemp, by the way, we've really narrowed this down. We are, you know, within sight of the goal. And I think that what I would say is that I will support Commissioner Myers' skillful construction of the motion so that we can have some board consensus in moving it forward. We can listen to what people have to say to us over the next two weeks because I'm sure they won't be shy about emailing us and stopping us in the aisles at Publix to give their opinions. And we can nail down the final numbers when it comes back to us.
Well, I still believe, I believe I still have the floor, Madam Chair. So look, Commissioner White, you're recognized. So just the final statement here. Commissioner Myers, if you do choose to address the issue of buckets today, I think that sends a strong signal to the public either way. I think the three buckets would certainly send a strong signal to residents of suburban and rural Hillsborough County. I don't want to speak for Commissioner Hagan, but I certainly think that it would send a strong message to constituents certainly in District Four and probably constituents in a district like District Two. So I've said my piece. If you decide to address the buckets today, I would like for the, a draft that comes before the board at the public hearing to have the three-bucket system as the starting point for debate and discussion.
Before I ask Commissioner Myers to offer us a motion, I'd like to say one thing. It is critical that we move forward on April 6. If we delay because we can't come to an agreement or we end up in disagreeing on, you know, percentages or the methods, that will be problematic on our process. If we delay in coming to consensus on a referendum that isn't creating clarity for our voters so that they show up in November, it will result in another two-year delay because this board wasn't able to come to an agreement on our long-range transportation plans, needs, and policies. So I am concerned with leaving some lack of clarity today. Granted, we do have to have flexibility in the ballot language, and we want that. And obviously, if the Surtax were based around our long-term transportation plans that have been presented over these workshops and to address the financial needs and the performance measurements, I think we could get there. But planning on the fly does not give our voters confidence that this isn't political. Planning on the fly gives our voters an indication that there may be something else in play they can't see. And they have watched our TPO meetings. They have watched our Hart meetings. They have heard us talk about what we've needed. They've seen our workshops, and they've attended, some of them, a small number of them have attended our town halls. But this plan that was presented in 18 has been what we've been planning with. These, all of our calculations for what we were going to do and our list of projects were based on a 1% sales tax with the allocation that we've been planning on since 2018. We began that process in 19. And if we don't continue on a path that is based on our long-term transportation needs, we've got to start over again, and the cost will be greater. So I do agree, the percentages do seem as though like something we should compromise on. But I realize there's a cost with that. And if it means the referendum fails in November, that cost only gets bigger. So with that, Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, after sitting here, hearing all of the wonderful, wonderful comments from my colleagues, and I said, I'm willing to work within the aisle and I'm willing to cross the aisle. But it appears more I'm in the aisle. I'm just going to be upfront about it. Because the bottom line is, if we don't do anything today, we're not going to have anything to give to our voters in November. And that's my ultimate goal, is to have a referendum on the ballot on November the 8th, 2022, that our voters can pass so we can get some projects done here in Hillsborough County. So does that mean I have to step back because I need to reach the ultimate goal? Yes, I'm willing to step back because I want the transportation tax pass come November. That's the goal. I want to be clear. So I've had the opportunity for all of us to take the shortcut, no cut, say what we want, what we don't want. But the bottom line is the transportation tax is needed. We need a new source of revenue. Want to be clear. We cannot do anything without that. That will fund our projects. So with that being said, I am ready to make a motion.
Please do.
Okay. One, a 30-year, 1% transportation Surtax, and I hope I have my math right, so somebody write it down so we can get it right, okay? At 54.5%, a percentage of funds to Hart of 45%, a half a percent to TPO. Number four, reasonable restrictions on the use of funds received by the county and city of Tampa. Five, the ability of the board to modify the distribution of funds in the future. Six, a citizen oversight committee. And seven, it's a director county attorney's office to prepare an ordinance for the referendum on the tax to be presented to the voters on November the 8th, 2022. All being said, is the source of revenue of 1% transportation sales Surtax is needed now, and now is the time to get this done and to send a referendum to our voters on November the 8th, 2022. That is my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we've got a second. Can I ask for some clarity? When you mentioned the apportionment among the municipalities, did you mean to also include Plant City and Temple Terrace?
Yes.
Okay, I thought you did. It's just, I didn't.
You want me to call it out?
I couldn't remember whether you said cities, but in reference, the three of them or just?
It's all.
You meant all three of them?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And just for clarity for the clerk, to make sure that that's clear. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Myers, a second by Commissioners Kemp and Cohen. I just have one question. Does that include consideration of a CAC approach towards, rather than any other type of accountability measure within it?
Yeah, she said.
Did, you did say it. I just missed it. Sorry. I was listening very carefully, writing down numbers again. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Myers, a second by Commissioner Kemp and Cohen. Commissioner Hagan?
Thank you. I'm going to support moving.
I'm going to support moving forward today. As I said before, I do have some policy and timing concerns, you know, moving forward. I do want to have an opportunity to see the ordinance, digest exactly what Commissioner Myers has on the floor, so going to vote to move forward today, but we'll see what transpires during our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagan. Seeing no other names in the queue, please indicate your vote. Yeah, we need your vote. We definitely—you mean the motion, you need your vote.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner White voted no.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Again, thank you all so much. I know this was not an easy task for us, but we got it done.
We sure did. Thank you very, very much for your hard work. I appreciate it. Okay, Ms. Wise.
It seems like we've come to the point where maybe a good break for lunch—
I'd like to do mine if that's possible.
Pardon? Oh, you'd like to do yours first?
It's going to be brief. It should be.
Madam Chair, I'm going to need to do mine as well because I have a live audience member associated with mine.
Well, do you all like to continue?
Is—are we able to hopefully with the goal of being done at—whatever—I can't tell them what time it is. I can't see that far. At 12:30, hopefully. So, our goal is to be done at 12:30, and we will proceed to the next two items.
We will proceed. The next item is Commissioner Hagan's item, item F2 regarding taxes and fees and other issues.
Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I promise this is going to be very brief. Across the country, there's been a perfect storm that's hit many people extremely hard financially. Among other issues, we are experiencing out-of-control gas prices, significant rent increases, and spiraling inflation. These issues are not unique to Hillsborough County. However, our residents have been hit particularly hard. There've been a couple of recent articles indicating that Tampa is number one in the state and number seven in the country for the highest rent increases over the last year. Additionally, Tampa is the hardest hit in the country with 12% inflation. We have a lot of residents who are really struggling, so I would like to see if there's anything we can do to offer relief to our residents, families, and businesses during this economic crisis. So, today, the motion is simply to ask staff to come back with a matrix of any taxes and fees that we may reasonably suspend to provide financial relief. And then, similar to what the legislature is doing with respect to suspending gas taxes in October, to ask the legislature to have a special session to approve allowing counties to suspend our local option fuel taxes this year. So, essentially, it's asking for information to come back, and then by, I guess, April 20th, and then we can see what, if anything, we have to offer, and then the board can make a decision at that point. That's my motion.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, a motion by Commissioner Hagan, a second by Commissioner White. Any discussion?
I do.
Okay. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I understand this motion is just to bring something back for final approval. When that happens, I would like to see, you know, how much money we're talking about pulling in and how much money, you know, where it would come from in terms of filling potholes, paving roads, how much of that would be put off a month, so we know exactly what the trade-off is, what this will save anybody and what it will cost the county. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually would also like to see the financial impact of us doing that on the community as a whole. What I recognize is the inflation of gas has been one rate, but the inflation of childcare is another. Inflation of the cost of insuring your vehicle is another. All of those inflation rates may be higher than the inflation we've seen with gas prices, and that financial impact needs to be reasonably considered. So, thank you very much for bringing this motion so that we could see what that means. And with that, please indicate your vote. Don't—milk, right, yeah, milk too. Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Mine— Okay. Mine was going to close off on me a few minutes ago.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, thank you very much. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is Commissioner White's item, and this is regarding hemp products and retail stores.
I'm sorry, Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a—I believe I still have a guest here today, Ellen Snelling. I've worked with Ellen a lot through the years. She's my resident expert on issues related to marijuana and THC. I think you're all aware from your briefings as to what my item is about. Regardless of how you feel about marijuana use or THC, I think what I'm going to bring forward today is addressed as an issue that could potentially target children in our community, and it's important that we address it. It was Ms. Snelling that brought this to my attention. She had found—so you can come on up—she had found some candies in a store that, you know, contain a THC product, and it looks very much like, you know, just the normal non-medicated candy that you'd buy. I think she wants to pass a display along so that we can all take a look at it, but as you all know, THC is the active ingredient in marijuana, and there are various isomers of THC. It's the Delta-9 THC isomer that you typically think of as the active ingredient that produces the high when folks use marijuana. The Delta-8 isomer is typically derived from hemp and may have psychoactive and intoxicating effects approaching the effects of Delta-9 THC. The Delta-8 products may be marketed as ingestibles such as candies or drops or inhalants. There's a myriad of state and federal regulations that address this issue. For example, the state of Florida has created a state hemp program or plan to regulate various aspects of cultivation and marketing of hemp-derived products, subject to approval by the federal government. Provided that Delta-8 products conform to these state and federal requirements, it's legal to sell and consume these products. But as I mentioned, Ms. Snelling has brought to my attention that she found some examples of Delta-8 products being marketed in a way that may confuse the public, particularly minors and their parents, as to the contents of the product, or mistake the products for common, well-known, non-hemp candies. So, I will, in the end, make a motion, but before I do that, I've invited Ms. Snelling here today to make a few comments about the issue at hand. Welcome.
Thank you very much for inviting me, and hello, everyone. And I know you're hungry, but you don't want to try that candy. So, good morning, Commissioners. I'm Ellen Snelling, Board Chair of the Hillsborough County Anti-Drug Alliance, and I want to thank you all from the bottom of my heart for considering this item. It's a very disturbing drug threat, in my opinion, and I especially want to thank Commissioner Stacy White for taking the time to investigate the complaints about Delta-8 sales in Hillsborough County and placing this on the agenda today. What is Delta-8? Is it a new airlines? A sorority, perhaps? No. Unfortunately, Delta-8 THC is a variant of Delta-9 THC, which is the active ingredient in marijuana. Delta-8 is the latest drug trend that our children and grandchildren know about, but parents and grandparents have been kept in the dark. I found out about Delta-8 when I saw a news story about a family that was visiting from Ohio. They went to the sponge docks in Tarpon Springs. At the end of the day, they went to a place called Groovy Smoothies. They were thirsty, right? So, they went in there, and the clerk said, "Would you like our regular smoothies or our cannabinoid-enhanced smoothies?" The mother said, "Well, I have a three-year-old child, so I don't want any kind of cannabis." And they said, "Oh, that's fine. We have regular as well." So, the child wanted a cake pop, and that's what he got. Unfortunately, later that night, he woke up screaming and crying and twitching and shaking. The mother had to rush him to Advent Health Emergency Room there in Pinellas County. After testing was completed, she was shocked to find out that he had marijuana poisoning. The clerk had made a mistake and accidentally given him the THC-enhanced cake pop. It had 100 milligrams of Delta-8 THC. There was no way that anyone could know. It looks exactly the same. So, the little boy got the THC-laced treat. This is not how we want our tourists to leave our state and go back to their home state and tell them how their vacation went. So, recreational marijuana is not legal in Florida. Medical marijuana is legal, but it's very highly regulated. How could a child get a cannabis-laced treat at a smoothie shop? Welcome to the wild world of Delta-8 THC derived from hemp, which is a legal product, but it's a loophole in the federal farm law that was passed in 2018. So, Florida allows our farmers to grow hemp and hemp products and make CBD from it, and there's very strict regulations for hemp, but none of them address this new product, Delta-8. So, there's Delta-8, Delta-10, Delta-O, and I'm sure there's going to be more. It's derived from a chemical process, taking CBD, which of course is, you know, an innocuous product that doesn't make anybody high, but they take solvents and acid and change CBD to THC. I still find this mind-boggling. And unfortunately, under Florida law, there's no way to address it. So, the problem is, these products are not natural at all. They're synthetic, and they're very similar to Delta-9 THC, the illegal ingredient in marijuana. So, to me, it's almost a way to bypass the system and legalize recreational marijuana right before our eyes. And this stuff is available in gas stations—that's where I bought a gas station convenience store. It's in smoke shops, CBD shops. So, it's a problem in that it can cause child poisonings, emergency room visits, and it can impair driving. We were all talking about roads and transportation earlier. This can cause impaired driving, so make our roads less safe. There's no testing for contaminants. It's completely unregulated. Fruit flavors, gummy bears, bright colors, attractive to children, all allowed in the state of Florida. So, since I've become aware of Delta-8, I did visit some stores, and that's what I'm passing around to you. This is what I'm finding. It looks just like regular children's candy. There's no way—if a child saw one of these packages—there is one package that's actually real children's candy. It's a Skittles. It's a red container. Everything else is THC-laced candy. If this was laying on your dining room table, a child would eat the whole package, and it has anywhere—the smallest package that I sent around has 150 milligrams of THC. The largest package has 500 milligrams. One dose of medical marijuana is 10 milligrams. So, like I said, it's kind of like—it went under the radar, but it's out and it's readily available right now, and that's my concern. As far as legal medical marijuana, and I'll just refer you to the statute 381.986, edibles cannot be attractive to children. They cannot be manufactured in the shape of humans, cartoons, or animals. They can't be in any form that bears any reasonable resemblance to products available for consumption of commercially-available candy. That's exactly what this stuff is. It can't even have color additives. It has to have a plain, opaque packaging. It has to have a warning label. So, you can see, this, to me, is really undercutting the medical marijuana business in Florida, and when I checked the pricing, it really is, I would say, at least half-price. So, not only do you not have to go to a doctor, you don't have to get a recommendation, you don't have to go to a dispensary, no testing, and then you can go into a convenience store and buy this stuff. So, that's one concern. But the biggest concern I have is for children, and that's really why—once I saw the story about the child that happened in Tarpon Springs, I just couldn't sit back and do nothing. So, I've just—I've been talking at the state level. I've talked to a legislator. Of course, the session's over. So, what do we do? Wait till 2023? I mean, I definitely want to follow forward with some kind of legislation. There actually was a bill this year. It went nowhere. So, nothing was passed this year, so we would have to wait till then. So, if there's anything we can do, possibly, you know, at the county level, at least to get started—I mean, there's no age limit on these. It's not 21 and up. There's—it's the Wild West. So, but thank you very much for looking into this, and I did want to thank—let me just get to my last page here. I'm so thankful that the Hillsborough County Commission, the county attorney, code enforcement, and consumer protection will be investigating the sales of Delta-8 THC and working on ways to educate parents, store managers, and the public about this potentially dangerous drug. The Hillsborough County Anti-Drug Alliance is ready and willing to help in any way we can. We have a PowerPoint presentation and other resources to educate the public on this and research on the 20 states across the country that do have regulations and have or bans on this product. So, I just—thank you so much again.
Thank you, Ms. Snelling. Commissioner White, and I did have a comment or a question that I'd like to make.
Sure, and thank you, Ms. Snelling. And I didn't realize that you were going to be speaking on behalf of the Anti-Drug Alliance today. That's powerful. Thank you very much. Ms. Snelling passed along these examples. There's an example of some of the candies in the backup material. So, with all that, my motion is to direct code enforcement slash consumer protection staff to work with the county attorney's office and, number one, investigate the constituents' complaint regarding the labeling slash marketing slash sale of the subject Delta-8 hemp products in a retail store in Hillsborough County. Number two, to refer any determination of illegal and/or deceptive labeling slash marketing slash sales of this product to the appropriate local slash state agencies and/or take enforcement action under the Hillsborough County Consumer Protection Ordinance as appropriate. And number three, determine if similar issues exist in other retail stores in the county, and if so, implement an education campaign to make the general public, including store owners, more aware of these products and their potential harmful impacts.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Kemp. And I was just going to say, one of the things that I was concerned about, given that I—there was absolutely no doubt that if my grandson walked into a store and saw that, he would not know the difference. And that's not okay. So, I don't know if your motion included the concept of actually having it behind a glass door, you know, so that it's not on a shelf, so it inadvertently be, you know, purchased by a minor, just as we do with cigarettes and other items that have regulation associated with possibly causing health hazard. I'd love to see that part back as part of the report that you're offering. So, I just—I was mortified when I saw this. It's just terrible. So, thank you very, very much.
And I'll say to Ms. Beck, anything that the county has authority to regulate with respect to these, feel free to bring that back for the board's consideration, whether that be, you know, age limitations, keeping it behind the counter, those sorts of things.
Understood, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, seeing no other comments, please indicate your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, Ms. Wise. And it looks like, given if we are going to cover the next one rather quickly, we might be able to do the bond utility and get our time certance out of the way.
Exactly. Thank you. And the next one is item B2, and this is regarding our utility revenue notes not to exceed $37.5 million. And we have Kevin Bricki from Management and Budget, and we also have Dwayne Draper with our bond counsel available too for comment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kevin Bricki, Management and Budget. B2 is asking you to approve a resolution supplementing Resolution Number R03112 as amended, providing for the issuance of the Hillsborough County, Florida Subordinate Utility Revenue Bonds Series 2022 in the principal amount of not to exceed $37,500,000, to finance on interim basis various water and sewer capital improvement projects and paying the costs of issuance for the note, and also authorizing the execution of the agreement with truest commercial equity, authorizing officials of the county to execute any document or action required in connection with the issuance of the note, and to approve the associated budget amendment in the amount of $25,580,000, and also to authorize and direct the clerk or any deputy clerk to pay the costs associated with this transaction. Dwayne and I are available for questions, and we would ask for approval of the item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any more discussion?
Move of approval.
Move of approval by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Kemp. Seeing no further comments, please to indicate your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
We're on a roll, Ms. Wise.
Yes, let's go through. The next item is a regular item. It's item B1. This is regarding the American Rescue Plan for 830— This is regarding the American Rescue Plan for $835,000 for the Hillsborough County Tax Collector. Tom Fessler will go through this item quickly.
Mr. Fessler, you're recognized.
Morning, Commissioners, or good afternoon. Tom Fessler, Chief Financial Administrator. And ARP, the ARP item I'm bringing to you today is asking you to approve an agreement with the Hillsborough County Tax Collector and an associated budget amendment. The agreement totals $835,000, and it covers things such as an expanded teleworking capability for the tax collector, improvements to customer accessibility in service areas, and enhancement of an appointment queuing system. This item falls under the Public Health category of the ARP. If this item is approved today, the board will have committed $212.4 million to date out of $285.9 million of the available ARP funding.
Thank you for your report. Any board discussion?
Move approval.
Move approval by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Myers. Seeing no further comments, please indicate your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Excellent, thank you. Ms. Wise, it leaves us with board appointments, and then I think we're done. Did I miss something?
Yes, we have Commissioner Myers' item F3.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Which may make sense to take up now and then have Luanne come afterwards, maybe? Is that easier?
That's, Commissioner Myers, you ready? Okay, good, let's do that. Thank you. Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item is for the United Bikers Association, want to hold their event here, May the 26th through May 29th at the Hillsborough County Fairground, which will bring an economic impact of about $2 million to $3 million here, and we have the $50,000 already budgeted for that, so I ask for approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Myers. Second. Second by Commissioner Kemp, and I'm looking forward to that, it's a lot of fun, too. So seeing no further comments, please indicate your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, we're rocking it through, guys. All right, but last item, Ms. Wise?
Is item F1, and you have four board appointments to consider. Luanne Finley is available virtually.
Ms. Finley, you're recognized.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have four boards to make appointments for. Your first board is the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. Please choose one, Commissioner Overman.
One.
Commissioner Smith.
One.
Commissioner White.
One.
Commissioner Cohen.
One.
Commissioner Hagan.
Three.
Commissioner Myers.
One.
Commissioner Kemp.
One.
Julius Adwapo will be on the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. Your next board is Industrial Development Authority. Please choose one, Commissioner Overman.
Four.
Commissioner Smith.
Four.
Commissioner White.
Four.
Commissioner Cohen.
Four.
Commissioner Hagan.
Four.
Commissioner Myers.
Four.
Commissioner Kemp.
Hmm.
Four.
[laughing].
Reynolds Allen will be reappointed to the Industrial Development. For the, your next board is Tourist Development Council. Travis Mitchell actually withdrew his application, so there are four positions that are open. Three of them are reappointments, and then Troy Manthe would be the fourth appointment.
So you just need confirmation when we're done addressing all of the, the next items?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then the last one is the Code Enforcement Board. I inadvertently added Jake Hoffman to the agenda. He is actually not eligible per statute. You have to reside in unincorporated Hillsborough County to be on this board, and he resides in the city of Tampa, so I need to remove his application, and then the other three applicants are eligible and should be appointed.
Excellent, so we'll just confirm that as that comes through.
Move to confirm.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to confirm, a second by Commissioner, I mean, by Commissioner White, and a second by Commissioner Kemp. Please indicate your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Finley. Ms. Wise?
The final item are future discussion items.
And this occurs on April 6? I think we should, we should probably defer to any of those items until after that, unless you do.
I do have one, and it's very quick. I, I'll be very fast. Madam Administrator, you and I had a discussion about this, but I wanted to ask you on the record, I would like to know, we, I'm hoping we would like to know, I'd like to make a motion for us to get a report back on whether or not any county funds are invested in Russia. And I know that the county has a very strict investment policy and that it really limits to very safe investments what we're, the clerk is allowed to invest for us, but I still think it would be a good idea both to look at our investments and to get whatever information we can from the State Board of Administration to make sure that we are not investing in things that maybe inadvertently are helping to finance the war against Ukraine.
Excellent request, thank you very much. Any others? And with that, I would say, meeting adjourned. Thank you.